Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call the Bloomington City Council meeting to order this evening. It is Monday, September 30th, 2024. Thanks to everybody who is here in the council chambers with us. Thanks to everyone watching online. We will begin our meeting as we always do. If you're able, if you could please stand, remove your caps, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks to everybody for joining us this evening. First order of business, counsel, is the approval of our agenda, and it is a meaty one tonight. We have under our introductory items, we have three items. We're going to do an introduction of new employees, and there are a number of them tonight. Item 2.2, we're going to have an update by Sheriff Witt from Hennepin County, who's here with us this evening. Welcome, thank you for being with us. And then we're going to hear an update from our newest Bloomington nonprofit, Bloomington Pride, and a recap of last weekend's very successful Pride celebration. Our consent business is 20 items long. Councilmember Rivas has our consent agenda this evening. And item four, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have five items under item four. And counsel, what I would like to do, item 4.1 is a timed item. That's a resolution authorizing issuance and sale of taxable sales and tax revenue bonds, Series 2024B. And because that's a timed item, I will move that right up after item 2.3, before we get into our consent business. Just for folks who are wondering, sometimes when we have timed items, we move them up in the agenda, primarily because the timed items more often than not include consultants, and we don't want them hanging around while we do other business. We want them to get the report off and get them off the clock as quickly as we possibly can. Also, under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we've got then four public hearings. Item 4.2 is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of Southgate Apartments at 8100 and 8007 12th Avenue South and 1001 and 1101 East 80th Street. Item 4.3 is a public hearing regarding city code amendments, our cannabis business zoning provisions. Item 4.4 is a public hearing, a moratorium regarding airport parking facility. And item 4.5 is a public hearing on the South Town partial redevelopment. That, of course, is at 7801 Penn Avenue South. Under item five, our organizational business, we will be doing some appointments to our I-35W Solutions Alliance and U.S. 169 Corridor Coalition. We've got a couple of staff vacancies there that we'll be filling. And we will start our first in-depth budget discussion this week. We're going to be talking about the fire department and our strategic priorities fund under item 5.2, under that budget discussion. Wrap up, as we always do, with item 5.3, our city council policy and issue update. I'm tired of just saying all that, counsel. And so as we get into this, I would strongly encourage you, if you have questions or comments, keep them concise and on point. Otherwise, we are going to see October arrive before we get out of here. So let's make sure that we stay on point and we get the work done that we need to get done tonight. Okay? I want to see five nodding heads over there in agreement. Very good. Counsel, if there are any additions or corrections to the agenda, I'd like to hear them now. If not, I will move agenda, or will move approval of the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No more council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Nelson has made it to the dea set. Dea set, I know he's here. We saw him in the building earlier. He must be tied up with something else and talking to someone. I think he was having conversations after our listening session. With that, we'll move on to our agenda. Item 2.1 is our introduction of new employees, and as I said, we've got a number of them. And we've got folks from engineering, maintenance, and utilities who drew the short straw and gets to go first. You're going to Julie Long forward. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I drew the tall straw because I'm going to be very short and quick because I know we have a lot of new employees. I have the pleasure of introducing four new employees in engineering. Three of them are kind of already quasi-Bloomington employees. They either, we've stolen them from our utility division, or they were part-time employees that we were able to make full time. And so without further ado, I'd like to introduce our three utility service specialists. They're the ones who are helping to manage all of our right-of-way. And hopefully, you've seen some improvements of the fiber management as we've gone now that we have the full-time staff. So I'll start with Roger Rudstrom. As I said, we stole him from utilities. He has experience in both the water plant and across the hall in utilities. I know normally you like to speak with them, mayor, but do you want to skip that tonight?
In the interest of time, if that would be okay with folks, we can keep things moving on. I appreciate everybody's being here, but I think in the interest of time, if we can just introduce them and move on, that'd be great.
Excellent. The next one is Hunter Kargula. He is also one that we borrowed from utilities. He was a utility locator for our staff. And fun fact about Hunter is his grandparents have the old farmhouse on Penn and 94th. So every time he comes to work, he gets to see where his grandparents lived. James Christiansen also was a utility locator, but for a private company. So he comes with good experience, and he lives in Bloomington. So we're very happy to have all three of them helping us manage the fiber optic in the right-of-way, along with the other gas, electric, and the other right-of-way management tasks. And then my last but not least is Serena Espach. She has three, or she has two Pomeranians, not three. Sorry, I gave you an extra dog there. And she works, has worked part-time for us and originally came from Inver Grove Heights and their communication staff. So she helps us communicate more effectively because, you know, engineers aren't always very good at that.
Well, welcome to the four of you. Thank you, and you've got big jobs and important jobs, obviously, within the right-of-way and within the engineering division. So welcome aboard. We're glad to have you and look forward to seeing you out and about in the city. Welcome aboard.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. Tim Barrett, the maintenance superintendent. I have seven individuals in the maintenance section to introduce today. I will start with Chris Los. He is our facilities manager. Chris started with us a couple of months ago. He has 18 years of experience in public safety, project management, and facilities management. Prior to Bloomington, Chris worked for the University of Minnesota, where he did some facilities maintenance. Chris is also a Bloomington resident, and he enjoys in his free time coaching his kids and running them around to many activities. So welcome, Chris. Our next one is Mike Quas. Mike Quas is a facilities technician. He has 20 years of maintenance experience. Recently worked for Shutterfly, and outside of work, he loves spending time with his family and going to the cabin. Mike is also an Air Force veteran. Welcome, Mike.
All right.
Our next one is Michael Nagash. He's our facility service technician as well. Michael has 25 years of experience, and prior to Bloomington, Michael worked for MSP Airport as an HVAC technician. Michael is originally from Ethiopia and moved to the U.S. in 2006. And Mike likes to play and watch soccer, along with spending time with his family outside of work. Welcome, Michael. Our next is Aaron Cotilla. He is our fleet manager. Aaron has over 36 years of experience in repair and management, and previously has worked for Scott County. In his free time, he enjoys hunting and fishing and spending time with his family. Our next is Jacob St. Martin. He is our fleet technician. He has over 10 years of automotive repair, and outside of work, he enjoys hunting and fishing. Our next on this is Ryan McDonough. He is one of our street operators. Ryan has over five years of experience and enjoys playing softball, golfing, ice fishing, when he's not plowing. And Ryan is also a Marine Corps veteran. Welcome, Ryan.
Welcome.
And last but not least, Cooper Wobkin is also our street operator. He has been a seasonal street employee for about a year now, and just recently has been hired as a full-time operator. Outside of work, enjoys weightlifting, fishing, and hanging out with friends.
Fabulous. Well, thanks to all of you. It's like a line change. It's like sending seven guys over the boards to go to the next line. Welcome to all of you. Much like engineering, maintenance is an incredibly important part of what we do here. And for a lot of folks, it's what they judge us on, how well we plow, how well we keep the streets, how well we make sure that it all looks and runs. And so thanks for the work that you have done. Looking forward to continuing to work with you in the future. So welcome to everybody in the maintenance shop.
Evening, mayor. Councilmembers, I'll introduce three of our newest employees from the utility divisions. Utility division, I'll start with Francesca Rosa Gorbatenko. Francesca moved to the Twin Cities just two years ago from Iowa and is originally from North Dakota. She has family in Columbia and in 2013 was a national swimmer. She also owns Two Fat Cats, is learning to play the alto saxophone, and hates coffee. She started just a couple of weeks ago at our front desk there. Next, I've got two utility maintenance workers who, they've both been here a little over six months, unable to attend Monday nights because they're taking classes. St. Paul Technical College is part of our utilities pathway program. First, I have Andrew Bandelin. Andrew grew up in South Minneapolis and currently lives in St. Paul. He enjoys activities like hunting, cooking, and basketball. And before he came to Bloomington, he did maintenance and delivery of all types of coach buses and is looking forward to working in Bloomington with us.
Welcome.
And we have Jeff Yates. Jeff grew up in Plymouth, enjoys hunting, fishing, and spending weekends at the cabin in northern Minnesota. He, before coming to Bloomington, worked for a company delivering lawn maintenance equipment to golf courses and municipal and retail customers. He also ran his own business for 12 years. And so we're excited to have Jeff and his new skills here with us as well.
Well, very good. And compliments, Scott. That's some in-depth background you do to find out somebody hates coffee. That's pretty good. That's good work.
Important one.
To the three of you, welcome. It's good to have you onboard and, like the others, looking forward to seeing you out and about in the city. So welcome to you. For all of our new employees, and I say this to every new group, for most residents of Bloomington, you're who they see when they think about Bloomington. And so appreciate the work that you do, appreciate the effort you put in, and appreciate you keeping up the high standards of this outstanding staff that we have here in the city of Bloomington. We've set a pretty high bar over the years, and it's so great to see people come onboard and then just jump right into that culture and continue to provide the outstanding service and work that everybody has come to expect. So welcome to all of you. Thank you for joining us here in Bloomington. Thanks for being with us this evening. It's good to see you. Thanks much. Item 2.2 on our agenda. We have with us our Hennepin County Sheriff. Duana Witt is with us this evening, elected two years ago.
It does seem that long, doesn't it?
It does.
It'd be two years in January.
Very good, two years in January.
And I've taken office, yes.
And appreciate your willingness to come and talk to us this evening, and I think for the first time in front of the Bloomington City Council. So we're very glad to have you.
Yes, it is. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Good evening. So I'm here to talk to you all about me, what the office is doing since I have taken office. But I want you to know that I really do appreciate you giving me that time to do so as I'm a very collaborative sheriff, recognizing Bloomington as one of the biggest cities in this county. And so partnership is very important to me. So I'm going to briefly talk just a little bit about the sheriff's office and a little bit about myself. I do think it's imperative when people know about the person who's in these leadership roles, it helps them understand like how they use their lenses when making big decisions that affect so many people. And then I'm going to also talk to you about the issues that ICS share for the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office and then all the areas that we cover. So a little bit about me. I know I heard some other people say they were from South Minneapolis. I too grew up in South Minneapolis. I'm a product of Minneapolis Public Schools. Being a graduate of South High, I don't know if anybody's from there, but if you are, you're lucky. During my time in high school, I should say that I didn't have the typical high school experience as I was a teen mom as well. But I had a good support system, playing basketball. Eventually, when I graduated from high school with honors and on time, I received the Allen Page Scholarship. That scholarship was very important to me because one of the things that it required you to do is give back to your community. I chose to teach English as a second language to the kids in my community, as well as offer organized sports to a lot of them who've never been involved in organized sports before. With that being said, I can tell you this. I never saw myself in law enforcement. I never thought I would be a sheriff. I thought I was going to be first an accountant, then a teacher, and then a nurse. I went to the College of St. Catherine, starting off in the nursing program, graduated with my degree in chemical dependency and family therapy. I then went to work in nonprofits, Brubinland Family Services, Pillsbury Neighborhood Services, working with families that had chemical health challenges, as well as open child protection cases. The reason I'm telling you this is I think it's very important for you to know the various lenses that I use even in this role as sheriff. One day, went on a tour of the Hennepin County Jail to become a detention deputy. I did not know it would be a 24-year sentence. Voila, here I am, so far. And, but it opened my eyes up to law enforcement. Because to be honest with you, I can tell you, growing up in Minneapolis, I did not trust nor feel safe with police, and that was just because of my family's own experiences. But it was there where I had to have those interactions, those conversations, that broke down those barriers that said, they're not all bad. And that's why I'm a huge advocate for community policing until this very day, because those are what we need to break down those barriers and build on those relationships. 2004, I'm going to put a little plug in here. I did apply to Bloomington Police Department as a licensed officer, but I didn't get it. However, Dakota County Sheriff's Office hired me. And it was in that capacity that I worked various roles, from detective school resource officer, crisis negotiator, eventually becoming a sergeant and promoted to captain, being the first woman to reach the rank of captain at that agency. And 2019, I was asked to come back to Hennepin County. And I made the choice to do after turning it down a couple of times. It was in the appointed role as a major. I think we all can talk about what the last four to five years have brought on to us. It was a lot to deal with, but you know what we know is we needed our people who had strong community bonds, have desired to work collaboratively to get us through those tough times. So in 2022, I was elected. 2023, I took the office. And boy, let me tell you, it was a surprise to me, too. But I am happy to say that I ran off it being authentic and not forgetting where I came from and not forgetting all those various lenses that I can bring to public safety. So right now, about the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, right now I have around 800 full-time employees and 50 part-time employees. I am like no other agencies, or I should say most agencies, because I think Bloomington's pretty much full staff. Good job, you guys. But right now, I'm authorized to have 241 licensed deputies. I'm down about 35. I'm licensed to have, authorized to have 198 detention deputies, and I'm down about 35 in that area. You know, I know that people get lost in the numbers that, say, Minneapolis have, but I got to tell you, that's a significant impact to the sheriff's office with all of the statutory mandates that I, as a sheriff, have to meet. When I started this job, we only had four bureaus. But recognizing that we had to expand, no matter what our shortages are, to make sure that we're responsive, because I like to be proactive and not always reactive when it comes to public safety. So we've expanded our bureaus. We have then, and I'm talking really fast because I know you guys are on a time scrunch. So tell me if I go too fast or something. Sorry about that. So our investigation bureau, which oversees our crime lab, criminal intelligence division, major crimes division, which includes VODAF, our new auto theft team, DTF, and as well as our electronics crime team. Next, we have our administrative services bureau, which oversees professional standards. Excuse me. Lost my spot. Professional standards, training, and technology, which is huge with everything we're seeing with AI and, you know, the amount of crimes, sophisticated crimes that we're seeing that are where technology basis use. We have a team specifically that looks into those type of crimes. Our court services, adult detention bureau, which was recently separated in two. When I came back to Hennepin County in 2019, as the major, I oversaw the court bureau, as well as the jail bureau. And let me tell you, the jail is the biggest liability of any sheriff's office. It deserved to have its own oversight, so we created another bureau where that major can only focus on the jail. Again, being proactive so we're not always responding to people. Again, being the largest jail in this state, you might have seen things recently in the news where we've been overpopulated. I think our count today was around 870, or 839-bed facility. But with that being said, let me tell you about a big difference between 2019 and if we look at the stats today. In 2019, we had a large number of misdemeanor people being held in our facility. Today, I will tell you, it has not dropped below 80% in at least the last year of people being held in our custody on violent felony crimes, which means the length of stay is longer because those trials tend to take longer. Our public safeties, I should say, sorry. So the court bureau has now taken over our civil extraditions and transport. And that was a big deal because we're still seeing some of the residual effects of the pandemic with paper service. That is, one of the statutory mandates of the sheriff is to make sure that those civil obligations are taken care of. And we are getting hammered with that. And the backlog of the courts is also something that's very much affected by that. Our public safety bureau, which oversees our dispatch unit, our patrol, our water patrol, and things like that. Some people ask, well, why do we need so many people in the water when there's so much crime? It's a statutory mandate for the sheriff to enforce the laws on the water as well. And then our public affairs bureau. So as I said before, I'm really huge on community service. And, you know, no matter the shortage, something that was non-negotiable for me is making sure we have a team that's proactively, all the time, going out there, building those relationships so that they are sustainable. So our public affairs bureau includes our community outreach team, as well as our wellness team, because we believe in taking care of each other so that they can do good work for the communities that they promise to serve and protect. And then also our media team. When we go talk about the current challenges in law enforcement, you know, I am also an adjunct professor at Inver Hills Community College. What I will tell you is our classes had dropped below 10. Some people had single-digit numbers. This semester, I have 30 students in my class. I haven't seen that since probably 2017. So I do see the pendulum starting to swing back, but we still got to deal with, how do we make sure that our deputies are not being tasked too much with overtime, forced overtime, if you will? And so that is one of my biggest challenges. It is recruitment and retention. You know, we get good people in, but we're still losing people, whether it's PTSD, retirement, people leaving for other agencies. But that is one of my biggest challenges to this day, as I shared with you what our staffing numbers are just a short time ago. Also, if the community connections, when I talk about community outreach, as a person who grew up in Minneapolis and understanding the resources or lack thereof and what it takes to really build trusting relationships between law enforcement and community, that has been a challenge with everything that's happened in Minneapolis. But, you know, I'm proud to say, too, that I've been having a lot of community feedback where they're saying they're not used to seeing the sheriff's office and they're happy to see us in their communities, which has been a blessing. And then lastly, as we all know, when we're talking about the lack of consequences, not just for our adults, but for our juveniles. You know, I talked earlier about collaboration. We need more collaboration to make sure that it's not always about penalizing, but it's about being held accountable. Adults and juveniles alike need to be held accountable. That's how we learn. That's how we learn the boundaries. But that has been a challenge. I can tell you, having some of the meetings with my detectives and my task force, being out there seeing some of the same repeated offenders is quite tiresome. But, you know, my biggest job is making sure I keep the men and women who are there motivated so they continue to do the work and continue to be professionals as they do so. When I go and talk about my strategic priorities, well, number one has to be violent crime, because if violent crime is an issue, nobody thrives. No one feels safe. No one has the best chance possible to live the life that they want and deserve. Hennepin County had a record number of homicides in 2021. I use homicides as the main statistic because many crimes are reliant on people reporting them, and that's what affects the numbers. You know, there are a lot of people that are confused. Is crime up? Is it down? How's it going down? How's it affected? But we all know it depends on how that data is collected and what timeframes that we're using. But homicides are always reported, and therefore more useful across times when citizens are reporting behavior changes. While homicides have decreased in 2022 and 2023, they are still nearly double what they were in 2010 to 2015. Point is, is we made progress, but we still got a long ways to go. It's not the time to relax. We have to continue to work together and to do our work in the best possible way to make sure that our communities are safe. As we all know, as Bloomington is one of the cities in Hennepin County, and while we follow all the rules across our jurisdictions, we know that there's some people that do not. And that's why the importance of collaborating, making sure that we have good teamwork, is imperative right now. Again, and not the time to relax. I could tell you, as for the sheriff's office, we have leveraged partnerships, not just with our local partners, but also our federal and state partners to get this done. Sometimes bad things have to happen for better things to happen. I will admit to you, we have not always worked the best together. So all these bad things, what they did is they forged us to have to work together, which I think is a good thing because it's something that should have been done a long time ago. When I talk about like things like our violent offender task force, our Southwest Hennepin Drug Task Force and our West Metro Drug Task Force, you know, just thinking about the stats for 2024 and making 760 arrests and recovering 456 illegally possessed or illegal firearms. And we're not even done yet with this year. And that's just one agency. You know, I've been finding myself saying often lately is that we have to deal with the world that's in front of us. We have to deal with the reality of things to get to the world that we would like to have. And so again, that means being collaborative and working with all of our partners because no one agency can do this alone. Number two is the opioid overdose prevention program. That has to be a priority as well. Because of fentanyl, we've seen about a 500% increase in opioid overdoses over the last 10 years. One person a day died of opioid overdose in 2023 in Hennepin County alone. When I talk about the confiscation just from the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, if I tell you that in a matter of a six-month time, we seized enough fentanyl off of the streets that could potentially kill every person in Hennepin County, that is horrendous. Again, that's the reality of what we're dealing with. You know, we're nothing short of an epidemic right now. And in fact, I can tell you that we initiated a program. It's called Focus on Fentanyl. And that program actually launched because of a Bloomington resident who came to me and talked about her son who overdosed. And she touched my heart. And like I said, community means everything to me. But, you know, it's like after talking with that family, then talking to another family from another city, and when we think that everybody knows what this is, and everybody knows what to do, and everybody knows what the resources are, talk to another mother who will forever have on her heart, she could have potentially been able to save her daughter if she knew what Narcan was. She didn't know. So, you know, it's not just about arresting people and locking people up. There has to be a prevention and education piece. Proud to say that at the sheriff's office, we go to the community, we teach Narcan classes, we give Narcan... we give Narcan out, all in efforts to keep people as safe as possible. And then number three, programming. Oh, gosh, this is where I get passionate about. Not everybody realizes that the people that are in our custody, the Hennepin County Jail is a pre-trial facility. Over eighty percent of the people go into that facility, go back to their communities. And that's before the word revolving door became a thing. That's always been with a pre-trial facility. With that being said, I would, I would like to, people to think about, if your communities are safer, your jails are safer. If your jails are safer, your community are safer. People are, go back to their communities. So bringing programs to the people while I have their attention, while they're away from the stressor, must be a priority for me. I don't go in expecting to save eight hundred people, but I have to believe if I can save or help change the lives of one or two, and then that domino effect on what they do with their families and their communities has to be important. And so I stand on that. We launched a program called HOPE. It stands for Helping Others by Providing Education. It just isn't an educational program, but we teach life skills. We not only do GEDs, we teach people or help people obtain their actual diploma, job, job skills. We're working with unions and credit unions to bring resources into the jail. Again, safer jails, safer communities. Safer communities mean safer jails. And it's been incredibly successful. The National American Counties Organization, as we call, NACO, has recognized our program that we're doing there. We went to Wright County and we helped them launch the same thing. Again, with the focus, the people in that facility are a part of our community. So we should be making sure that we're doing something for them there. The auto theft unit, which I recently brought up, we started that out in January of this year. And that was in response to the devastating numbers that we've seen in Hennepin County for auto thefts. As you may know, Bloomington is in the top three for auto thefts. Minneapolis is a far distance high. Nobody's going to catch them, thank God. But it, you know, collaborating with our other, our other law enforcement agencies and bringing this team together had to be a must. What we've seen so far, again, with them just starting in January and not getting going until March, I will tell you that the number of recoveries they've had is net worth is over three million dollars in vehicles that they have been able to bring back to people. And we think about that, if somebody's vehicle is stolen, how does that affect their livelihood, their family? That is their lifeline. So we may not be able to prevent them all, even though we're trying to with being more proactive in communities. Recovery is also important because that impacts families, mothers, fathers, from getting their kids to school, sports, or whatever it is. And so I'm, I'm glad that we've been doing that. And again, there's been a couple of other agencies that have now designated detectives to work with our detectives to be a part of this initiative, and it's growing, and we need it to continue to grow. And then I can't just talk too much about recruitment and retention. I already spoke on it. For me, I will tell you, if we're always being responsive because there's not enough law enforcement to be preventive and to build those relationships, it is going to be very hard to work on building trusting relationships. We oftentimes do not look good when we're responding to calls where bad things are happening. Just yesterday, as I was at an event in Bloomington and dealing with a woman who was going through a mental health crisis, and we had to call Bloomington PD to come assist, as I was in my regular people clothes, I do wear those sometimes, and I did make the links game still too. But, you know, seeing that and, and, and just being responsive, and then seeing the people who are pulling over looking like as if we were doing something wrong. The reality of it is, is sometimes when we're doing the right things and people don't understand what we do, it looks like we're doing wrong thing or bad things. The, one of the best ways to counter that is for our community to know their police departments, know their sheriff's offices, because if they know the culture, when they see things, it's not so easy for them to, to just assume that we're doing something wrong or doing something bad. And I will admit, it looked bad, but we were trying to help somebody from hurting themselves. And so with that being said, I'm going to continue to do my best to recruit and retain people. Our community outreach is a big part of that, and I would like to make sure that we continue to do that, because that makes us better partners to you all as well. Why don't we just go to the Bloomington stats? So I think Jacob gave you some of those, but I will say this, and you don't dare tell your chief, but Bloomington has always had an impeccable police department. You know, where these numbers fluctuate depending on what cities we're in and what resources they have, Bloomington has never been one that we worry about. You, you all do good work, and we welcome coming into the city and helping out at any time. Our partnership will always be open to help for anything that is needed here. So I, but I wanted to give you an idea of just what we've had so far this year to date. And with that being said, I would like to open it up. If you have questions or if you don't want to ask questions because you still have a full night to go, I understand that as well.
Well, thank you, Sheriff. Yes, we do have a full night to go, but I do want to offer an opportunity, counsel, if we have some questions for the sheriff, very quickly here, and we can, Councilmember Delasandro, and then Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. This was a really good overview of not only what you do, but what you do with us, so I appreciate that. I had a couple of quick questions related to that. First off, just on the statistics around homicides, is, is that, I assume that those numbers are unique, meaning they, they are not inclusive of all of Hennepin County? They are the homicides that are being reported to Hennepin County Sheriff's Department? Is that right? Or do, or is it a total of all departments?
It's, it's, it's all departments. That's a Hennepin County overlook. BCA is who we report all of our numbers to. Most law enforcement agencies have, have their own, and then with all of our analysts and things like that, we bring all of those numbers together. But usually the BCA is the, the train for that.
Okay, that's helpful. So that's not, we don't take Bloomington homicides plus Hennepin County homicides and add them together? Our numbers are in that number?
No. Yeah, no, we don't do it that way.
Okay, I just wanted to double check to make sure people weren't doing that math, because I was not sure I was supposed to do that math. Related to that then, is, is there a, you, you, you mentioned that because all, all, because homicides are the thing that are most consistently reported, you use that as kind of a, of a benchmark. Is there a correlation with the other violent crimes? Meaning, do they tend to go up and down at the same, in the same kind of intervals?
So we typically see violent crimes increase during the summertime. You know, and that runs parallel to what we see in the jail too, where our population tends to go up and the summer comes down in the fall and the winter. But yeah, it, it, it's interesting, because when we're talking about like violent crimes, I will be honest with you, one of the things that I brought up at our Hennepin Chiefs meeting says that I think that our, all of our law enforcement agencies within Hennepin County, it would be nice to say the state, but if we were all working on the same system, that's another big thing about being preventative, is like, how can you be preventative if you don't have the information? A lot of us are dealing with some of the same people. And it would be nice if we had that, that ability to, to share information as a hub. And again, I will speak for Hennepin County, because the state is just a bigger deal. As somebody who spent sixteen years of my law enforcement career in Dakota County, we had that, and it works. It works better. Again, when you want to be preventative, you got to have the information, and we're the only ones playing by these boundaries, whether, you know, city boundaries, county boundaries. But the people who are preying on our vulnerable people do not. We need something in place to help us share information.
Okay. Last question related to that then. You mentioned that the, the numbers on the, that are in the jail right now are over eighty percent violent felonies versus misdemeanors. Is, is that, it sounded like you indicated that that's a positive, meaning that the, the right people are being held in the jail and they take longer, so that's why the numbers are higher. Can you explain a little bit more about what you all are doing to make sure that the most violent offenders are, are being, I understood that they're being cared for, but that they're being detained in their trials?
Yes. Well, I could tell you, in 2019, that was not the case. We had a lot of people that were being held on misdemeanors, fare evasion, jaywalking, if you will, just minor, minor crimes, not violent. One of the other lessons that came out of the pandemic, again, becoming a jail that was held, or was used as a national standard with what we did. When we looked at crime there and who we were holding, that did force us to look at our hands. Who's there and who needs to be there, especially when you're talking about keeping people safe and having bed space. Hennepin County Jail did not lessen, it's, it's means to enter our facility as some jails did. In fact, we had people from other counties bringing people to our jail, and at that point, we had to say, okay, enough of this. When we look at the stats, like 2019 and prior to that, when we're talking about having a full facility, we have to think, who do we want there? Do we want to say, okay, somebody who is being held on a, a violent crime, a violent felony crime can't be there because we're holding somebody on a fare evasion citation? But, you know, as, as we kept continuing to do that and looking at our rules and working with my, my other Hennepin County partners, you know, again, yes, I am proud to say that right now, we have who we need to have in there when it comes to the number of people. If we had the amount of misdemeanors we had, say, in 2019 and prior, I would not have the space. In fact, I don't have the space right now. I am very fortunate to have good relationship with some of my other county sheriffs. I want to say I have maybe a one hundred and twenty people that are being housed in other facilities, just to make sure that we continue to have bed space, and we also have some projects going on. And I will tell you that I was very vocal about saying, I am not going to be a part of letting violent offenders out. I will not be on board with that. So we try to figure it out with the resources that we have.
Great. Well, I appreciate that. I look forward to seeing you back here at some point in the future, and I'll see you tomorrow at the links game.
Yes, you will.
Thank you. We, we, just for FYI, we literally sit three seats from each other, so we get to say hello a lot.
Yes.
Go links.
Good to know.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Councilmember Nelson, quick question.
Move on here. So I have a few quick questions, if I could. I, I just was wondering, you showed a thing with the activity with Bloomington, and in your analysis, does that indicate a reduction of crime in Bloomington? Does that indicate that due to the partnership between Hennepin County and Bloomington, that Bloomington Police Department is handling more of those calls? Or something else? What, what, what is the analysis that I should take from that?
My analysis is that Bloomington Police Department is just a great department. They're proactive, they're out there, they're engaged in their communities, you have a very good department. You know, you think about some of the cities where I had to do contracts with, such as Golden Valley, the city of Brooklyn Center, Oseo was asking for help. So the statutory mandate of the sheriff is to keep peace within the entire county. And we have agencies that function as well as Bloomington does, that means you need less resources, but it also says, we're always here for whatever it is you need. You know, I think about, I, like, I was actually surprised with the number of auto thefts in Bloomington, that one I didn't see coming or whatever. And again, it's, Minneapolis is the outlier with their numbers. But it's like, okay, is that something where we think that, okay, that maybe we can partner on? Because again, not everybody's playing by the rules of the city boundaries, and so how do we work best together to make sure that we are keeping our communities safe, even from people that are still in the cards?
Fantastic. Thank you for that.
Oh, yeah. And as Jacob pointed out, twelve months versus nine months, you know, the 2023 stats is the full twelve months, and then 2024, unfortunately, it's not.
The YTD.
Yes.
Sorry, I missed that, so thank you for that. We'll just take it for what it is. Looks good. My next question is, you, you talked a little bit about the incarceration thing, Councilmember DeLisandro talked about who you're doing. Is that, does that hold for the juvenile detention center? Is that under your purview as well? Because you had mentioned something particular with youth crime and things like that, and is that, are we, are you able to hold those that are causing most violent problems there?
No. The juvenile detention center is under the Department of Community Corrections, is not under the sheriff's office, and that's in most counties in Minnesota, not all, but most.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. One of the challenges that I have as an elected official, and I know you're elected, and all of us are elected, is sometimes there are misunderstandings between us and the sworn officers and police. And do you have any advice on how to build trust between elected officials and our police department? You know, I hold our police department in high regard, the sheriff's department in high regard, but candidly, it's sometimes challenging, because there are misconceptions on, on both sides.
Well, miss, I think a lot of those misconceptions are, again, is because of the barriers that are put up, because of what our perceived beliefs are. As I mentioned yesterday, helping that woman who was in a crisis, it didn't look like that. It looked like as if we were hurting her, yet we were trying to make sure she didn't hurt herself. The best way to do that is, as I brought up, I was that person who didn't think there was any good law enforcement people. It takes interaction, and it takes communication, and it takes a lot of listening. I know that I invite like our commissioners, I want you to come walk through our jail, I want you to tour it, be a part of the Citizen Academy. Take the opportunity to really learn not just what we do, but why we do it. And if it's still a disagreement, it won't be because you don't understand. But I would invite you to, to make those connections and just try to understand the, the whys behind what we do. It's very difficult. I can tell you, there's been some people that have been like, I can't believe you're having this many tours in the jail. Well, I'll tell you, as I say to my law enforcement partners all the time, let's stop acting like we're doing something wrong. We have to educate people all the time, and we have to be open for people to criticize us. I have a community advisory board that consists of twenty-nine people throughout Hennepin County. There's activists on there, there's retired judges, attorneys, stay-at-home moms, everything. The importance of having those diverse lenses is so important, again, when we're making decisions, you have to make sure you have the right people at the table and that people have the, the encouragement to speak out, even if they're the minority in that group. I mean, that is what we all taken on as elected officials. We don't just represent people that think like us, we represent people who don't think like us. So inviting people to the table, going to your police, being a part, do ride-alongs and those things, and just to try to understand. And at the end of the day, if you still disagree, that's okay. But let it not be because we didn't try. Again, I was one of those people. You could not tell me there was a good cop in this world. You could not tell me that. The only thing that breaks that down is to let people in, be honest, be transparent. And we're still working on that as a law enforcement, as a profession. But you know what? Google got us beat. You can find anything on Google now, right? But it's, that, that's part of that culture change that needs to happen, and not being afraid to be criticized. Just know when you make decisions, and sometimes there's mistakes to be made with that, it's not because you're negligent, and it wasn't because you weren't inclusive, it's because there's no one perfect in this world.
Thank you for that answer, and, and I will tell you, we're still working on that too. Every one of us is, so thank you for that. My last question, if I can, just very quickly. We look, you looked at the opioids and those types of things, and we have people in our community that someone in their family is, is struggling with that. There's a number of, so many people in our community that, that have that issue. What services, what help can the Hennepin County Sheriff's Department provide to a family that has someone who's having a drug or mental health crisis or something along those lines? How, how can you assist?
Thank you for asking those questions. First of all, I can tell you, I also have a student advisory cab, and that consists of high schoolers between grades ten and twelve. Several of those students are also Bloomington students. And I listen to them. You want to know what they say our problem is? Is that we don't listen to them, and so we force them to go look on the internet for the answers. Again, when we're trying to raise our kids in this world that does not exist, because we want them to just have a better life, we also got to think about protecting them. And protecting them is by educating them about the dangers that are out there. Well, talking to those students, and, you know, I will speak specifically to Bloomington and Edina students that are on that cab, and when they talk about how they're asking their schools for information, and it's not always there, I will tell you, as someone who's been pushing this Focus on Fentanyl initiative, we've been asking to get in schools to talk to the student bodies, and that has not been happening. I've worked with other people in the recovery field, but for whatever reason, it seems like we're having a harder time getting into public schools than we are private, because we have provided services in private schools, where we're just having open forums and talking to people. Again, you talk to some of these parents who have lost their children to overdose thefts, they're asking for help. And I'll go back to what those kids on that cab are saying, we're not listening. When to find out that one of your friends have died from overdose, and a kid who thinks that they're buying Adderall on Snapchat, and that's a whole other story, why do, why would they buy, buy an Adderall? But yet you have people masking that, and it's actually. But yet you have people masking that and it's actually fentanyl. Not everybody who's dying from this is knowingly taking it. So education has got to be a piece. We need more public forums. We really do need to be, um, back in the school systems. One of the other initiatives that I brought back at Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is the DARE program. Um, and DARE is more than about, um, saying no to drugs now. It's got a lot of different components to it. We had a waiting list of schools that wanted us to come and do the DARE program. Um, and again, that, you know, there's an opportunity there too, where kids can see us as being proactive. Again, that's another way to, uh, bridge that gap is being proactive, doing the work. Um, again, we have our, our team that goes out to the community. If Bloomington ever wanted to host like a community forum where we will come out and we will teach about the dangers of fentanyl, we will teach how to use Narcan. Here we are now where there's some people are like, oh, I can just do that on, online. I don't think that should be one of those online things. It's important enough to do in person. And, um, again, with what we're seeing out there, with the number of deaths that we're seeing, whether people are knowingly taking fentanyl or not, it's an epidemic. And we really need to think, how are we going to combat that? How are we going to stop helping the people that are preying on our families, our childrens? And that's by making sure that we give them the power they need and that's knowledge.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. I would just ask the mayor and city manager to consider working with the sheriff's department to do that type of education in our community, work with our schools, if there's a way to do that. If you're, it seems you're very interested in that. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here. It's greatly appreciated that you take your time to come down and talk to our community. So.
Councilmember, if I could just add one more thing I forgot to bring up. We just, um, recently hired an opioid coordinator too, to help us coordinate all of the things that are happening within the county and how we can do better to provide services as well as education and, and preventative measures. And so he is also going to be reaching out, I'm sure, to the city of Bloomington to ask, okay, what are you seeing and how, how can we help? So we hired a full-time person to do this work. He's very good. He's very, um, I hope he's not listening. He's one of those people that knows all the stats like off the back of his head. So I won't say nerdy, but kind of nerdy. But he's amazing. He's amazing. So I look forward to maybe him reaching out as well.
Very good. Sheriff Whit, thank you so very much. Thank you for being with us this evening. Thank you for the information. And thanks for the continued partnership with Bloomington and the Bloomington Police Department. It's greatly appreciated.
I greatly appreciate you all as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.3 on our agenda, uh, an update and some information on our newest Bloomington nonprofit, Bloomington Pride. And Amanda Crombie, I think you're going to kick this off for us. Uh, Amanda, of course, is with our co-ed department. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, my name is Amanda Crombie with the Community Outreach Engagement Division, along with my coworker Tracy Smith, who is joining us virtually. I don't know if you can see her, but she is joining us virtually. Um, we're excited to be here tonight to introduce Bloomington Pride, Minnesota, a new nonprofit in our community. Earlier this month, Bloomington Pride received its nonprofit status, a milestone following years of resident-driven efforts. What began as a pre-bip pandemic idea to host a local pride celebration has blossomed into a successful annual event, with this year's celebration marking the fourth of Civic Plaza, the fourth on Civic Plaza grounds. In the first two years, uh, city staff supported residents in organizing the event. And in 2023, Twin Cities Pride mentored the group to foster pride year round. This year, five dedicated Bloomington residents took on leadership roles to plan the event and secure nonprofit status for Bloomington Pride. Co-ed is proud to introduce the new Board of Directors, who have already shown their commitment to our community, with two members serving on Bloomington Boards and Commissions and three as recent graduates of the 2024 Bloomington Leadership Program. They basically graduated and we said, get to work. Um, so the Board of Directors of this new nonprofit include, I'm going to introduce them. If you guys can raise, uh, stand up and do your wave, that'd be great. So we got Gina Dubagovich, who is president, Anita Smithson, Public Relations and Communications, Jason Liu, Treasurer, and Amy Kilgore, Secretary, and Anna Cornblum, Compliance Officer. So let's give them a hand. I know that you're running out of time, um, but if you have 67 seconds, uh, the president would like to say a quick word.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you so much, um, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for your support, um, over the last four years, this year. I saw so many of you at our event. Thank you for that. Big thank you to Amanda Crombie and Tracy Smith, without whose help we could not have, have done this. This past, you know, Sunday, two Sundays ago, there were over 2,000 individuals that came out and celebrated with us. We had over 50 vendors. Um, and that's the past. And now as we start to think about the future, pride will go throughout the year. Um, we will do some other events, always culminating in a nice, you know, summer or fall pride festival. Um, but as we think about the future, the future is very digital. And so one of the things that we've already done is we've launched a YouTube channel that's already had 5,000 views. And so helping educate not just those in the city of Bloomington, but also around the world because it's global. And I encourage you all to subscribe because starting tomorrow, uh, tomorrow is October. And so October, uh, is LGBTQ History Month. And we will have one video, uh, fingers crossed, every single day, celebrating an LGBTQ individual. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, well, I, as, uh, someone who's seen this evolution from, from standing at Twin Cities Pride in the booth that Bloomington had at Twin Cities Pride and saying, why don't we do this in Bloomington to the point where we are here today? Uh, it's, it's been very impressive and I appreciate the work that you all have put in and that folks prior to you have put in and, and got us to this point. And, uh, it's, uh, it's inspiring work and it's, it's frankly, it's important work. And it's obviously well-received within the community and grateful for the work that you've put in. Grateful for the staff support that has gone into this. Grateful for the work that Twin Cities Pride has, uh, put into it and the support that they've shown. So, uh, well done, well done. And looking forward to your continued work and looking forward to the work throughout the year and to pride next year. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Council, next on the agenda, as, uh, we talked about when we adopted the agenda, we are going to move up a timed item. So we will move now to item 4.1. This is a resolution authorizing issuance and sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds, series 2024B. Lori Economy Schuler, our CFO, was here to bring us through this. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see. So tonight on our sales tax, um, we're bringing you our first bond issue for the sales tax revenue bonds. Um, and just to highlight, um, the city is and has received for the last 20-plus years, three triple As from the, the three credit rating agencies. In our August discussion with Baker Tilly, when we're doing a taxable revenue bond like this, we will, um, and those are all general obligation bonds. We're not issuing a general obligation bond this time. So we will not get a triple A. The highest that we could get is double A plus. So we are preparing, um, the credit rating materials for next Wednesday when we have our credit rating call. So hopefully the outcome will be a double A plus. And we are, our first time with a sales tax bond. So this first one will be for the Bloomington Ice Garden. And we've had numerous conversations about what will, what will be included in the Ice Garden. So I'm going to just keep moving forward with that piece. Um, we are authorized to sell up to 35 million for the project, um, per the legislation. But as we go through the slides, you'll see that, uh, the current authorization is at 34,865,000 because we are going to be using the three months of sales tax receipts that we've received to date to help set up the, the pieces of this. And you'll see those in the next couple of slides. So it'll be a 20-year term, again, sales tax bonds, all paid by the sales tax that Bloomington receives. So here are the three months of receipts. And our first month was for April collection. Um, the Department of Revenue receives it in May and we receive that, um, pretty much the 10th of each month. So we won't know the July amount until next Thursday. So we will be using the 3,506.789 and 15 cents. Um, and just to give you some math on that first line, that million 41, if we multiply that by 12 months, we are making, um, over the 12,500,005, which is what our estimate is for all of the bonds. So as the amount goes up, it's even better for us. So here is the current kind of setup that we will use. Um, the 34,800,000 in bond proceeds, we'll also use the 3.5 million of tax. And then in the project fund, we will be able to put that 35 million, um, the debt service reserve. So on a revenue bond, we have to have the debt service reserve. And then, um, currently estimated is an underwriter discount, the cost of issuance and just the rounding of clerical costs for the total uses. All of those numbers will slightly change when the bonds are sold a month from now. So again, the credit rating call is coming up next week. And, um, on sale is on the 28th. We will provide the results of that bond sale information at the council meeting that evening. And then we will receive the proceeds a month later. And this will pay for both phase one and phase two. Phase one, um, the bids are already being, coming in on the pieces of it. So we'll stand for questions, but that's the motion. Julie Eddington is also on remotely. If you have any questions for our bond attorney.
Thank you very much. And, and I want to clarify again, just in case there's any questions that, uh, the bond call that's going to happen. This, these are specifically sales, taxable sales tax revenue bonds.
Yes.
As opposed to general obligation bonds, two different types of bonds. And on these bonds, we'll have the double A plus likely, hopefully.
Hopefully.
And our general obligation bonds, we will still have that triple, triple A that we've had for.
That is correct. And on these, the only source of revenue to pay for these is a sales tax. Without the G O, there's no pledge of the city's tax levy. So very separate types of bonds, very separate types of revenue.
Very good. Then, thanks for, for clarifying that. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that these are two different types of bonds and two different bond ratings as a result. So. Council questions on this? It's exciting that we're moving forward on the, on the, on the Ice Garden project. Councilmember De La Sandro?
Very quickly, I was doing the math that you were doing, uh, Ms. Economy Schuler. So I just want to make sure I understand. So if, if the trend continues and we see about a million dollars a month, maybe a million three a month coming in, um, over the course of that, um, are we, are we anticipating then that we will? Because we have up to, I think it's 20 years to accumulate, right? That we would be ahead of accumulation plan as it relates to the amount of money we've bonded for? Or have, I guess, referend, our referenda was for 155 million.
Plus cost of issuance.
Right.
Debt service reserve. So the, the normal piece that we would think about this is, um, we've got three months of history. We don't have a full year. We don't know all the cycles.
Yep.
So, um, until we know more, um, when we've looked at, I'll, I'll call it, um, our lodging, admissions, um, there are variability month by month. Um, when people buy, people go to things. So we're, we only have three months of data.
Right. And we have it for them. We had, and we have it for the strongest of those months as it relates to admissions and other things like that. So that makes sense. Okay. I understand.
So just to complete the, your thought on that, um, should we get enough revenue to come in and pay all the debt service, all of the interest? And the state checks that box that we have at all, they will shut it off.
Council, if there's no other questions, I would look for a motion.
Happy to make it.
Councilmember De La Sandro?
Yes, sir. Uh, so I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds, series 2024B, and the proposed aggregate principal amount of 34,865,000 dollars.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember De La Sandro, second by Councilmember, uh, Lohman, thank you, uh, to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Now we'll double back on our agenda, council, and we will take up our consent business. Councilmember Revas has our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Revas. Councilmember, if you could turn your microphone on, please. Thank you.
I always forget that. I think my voice carries, you know? I move items, uh, items 3.2, 3.20 on tonight's consent agenda as, um, um, Councilmember De La Sandro is holding 3.1.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Revas, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt tonight's consent agenda, item 3.2 through 3.20. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. So we had to hold on item 3.1, the Luther Kia Expansion. Councilmember De La Sandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. So the, the question that I had earlier today, um, and I know we heard, um, from Mr. Coleman in our, um, in our listening session tonight too, was, um, if I recall correctly, when, when back, and I feel like this was very early in my tenure on council, but when we were looking at the potential for, uh, both the Walzer project and then also the potential for the electric vehicle project at the Old Days Inn site, there was this push to look at the, the notion of, um, densification of those properties, meaning that we wanted them to build garages that housed their, their cars in multiple layers. And we, that way we would have more land availability. Um, um, and it, and it, it seems as though this, this is not falling within that desire. Um, and I think it's because of that, which precedes most of us on council here, this, um, compromise solution that was made at some point that said, hey, if you already exist as a dealership prior to 2015, that won't apply to you. Uh, so now I feel like we're a little bit of a, between a rock and a hard place here in the sense that now we're talking about a very, very popular transit-oriented development area in the Penn American space. Um, we already don't have a park and ride for that 82nd and Knox area, which I desperately wish we had. Um, and, uh, and now we're going to expand basically a surface lot parking facility for, uh, a dealership. Um, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it in the sense that this is what the ordinance says and they're in compliance with the ordinance and it's been approved by planning and there's not a whole lot we can change about it. But there's an open question in my head about whether or not, um, that's something that we want to think about, given the location of this particular property and how we might be able to do something more creative there. So I, I don't know what our options are, but I'd like for us to explore them if we can.
Uh, I, I see Mr. Markergard here, and maybe you could give us a little bit of background on how we got to this point and, and exactly what the parameters are and whether or not there is, are, if there are options. And, and frankly, councilmember, I'm not sure that there are based on the decision that was made these nine years ago.
Yes.
On this. So.
Right.
Mr. Markergard?
Sure. Uh, good evening, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember De La Sandro. Uh, kind of walking back to 2014, 2015, that's, uh, when the city brought forward rezoning of the area as recommended by the Penn American District Plan to the C5 district. Uh, there was a lot of concern, uh, from property owners at that time. And the council in place has staff to go back and make some modifications that would be more amenable to the property owners. We had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion. And ultimately what came out of that was some compromise language, uh, which was added to the city code. And I can, uh, give a little bit more highlight on that compromise language if, if desired. Um, if we could, uh, Mr. Parker, get the overhead, uh, camera. Maybe zoom in a little bit tighter. Thank you. So, um, a couple of things were done. One, the C5 district has a minimum floor area ratio of 1.0. Uh, one of the compromises was that was reduced to 0.6. Uh, another thing, um, the dealers were very concerned that existing dealerships would not be able to make modifications and would be kind of stuck in their existing configuration. So to address that, uh, this language was added to the code. And it basically says that that floor area ratio could be further reduced at the discretion of the city council, uh, provided the council met these following findings. And just. And just to highlight the level of deviation, again, 0.6 is required, 0.23 is proposed, and then 0.9 is the existing floor area ratio. So there is quite an amount of growth relative to the existing floor area ratio, but still a long ways below that minimum required. So the required findings, there are four of them. The first one is that the proposed modifications do not increase the proportional planned area devoted to passive uses relative to the land area devoted to active uses. Staff feels like that's a checkmark yes, that's clearly the case here. Second one, the proposed modifications will result in an increase in onsite activity. We feel like that is also a checkmark yes. And then the third being that the proposed modifications will substantially advance, I think that's the key term, substantially advance, any applicable zoning ordinance provisions for, and then it lists a bunch of areas, including building placement. And, and then the fourth one is an or that does not apply in this case, so really, we think the key focus tonight would be on that finding number three. I would say staff has been supportive throughout of the deviation in floor area ratio, provided that that street enclosure issue is addressed. Staff proposed a condition of approval that was heavily discussed at Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did unanimously vote to remove that condition of approval, and I can highlight that for you briefly. This is the proposed site plan. You can see the street enclosure along Knox Avenue. What staff had recommended is that, well, first of all, code requires 50% street enclosure along Knox Avenue. Staff recommended that that enclosure be increased, in this case to 47%, and we showed approximately what that would look like on the ground. Now, that would not necessarily need to be additional floor space, that could simply be a reconfiguration of the existing floor space. So if you think of this being the service area and this being the showroom and office area, rather than the showroom office area being more of a square, could be a rectangle, for example. We've heard very loud and clear from the applicant, they do not want to do that, are very opposed to doing that. So that's a little history on how we got to where we are tonight.
Councilmember DeLisandro, any follow-up questions?
Um, I guess the, the, the discretion, so going back to your, your, your recommendation, Mr. Markergard, that we focus on that provision number three, what I guess I'm, I'm, just to make sure I understand the math here. So right now, they have a floor area ratio of .09. They are proposing a floor area ratio of .23, but the current C5 requirement is .6. Do I have those in the right order?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLisandro, that's correct.
Okay. So are you suggesting that, that we as a council can require them to do the .6 because if, if we find here that the proposed modification will advance the applicable zoning ordinance provision?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLisandro, clearly, this flexibility is at the council's discretion, so you can do with what the council will, but staff's initial recommendation was to allow the 0.23 floor area ratio with gaining more street enclosure. We felt like that would substantially advance that issue and meet the intent of the negotiated compromise.
Okay. In the picture that you showed, I'm still assuming that the majority of the, the parking space that's identified there, the surface parking space, is intended for storage of cars available for sale? Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, that's correct.
Okay.
The majority would be storage of show automobiles.
Right. Okay. So I guess my point here, Mr. Mayor, is nothing that is there can potentially solve the problem, which is what I'd really like us to see and what I think we would like to see if we believe in the Penn American vision, is that that isn't a bunch of surface parking with a bunch of cars idly sitting there waiting to be sold. We'd have the ability to, to have that developed because those cars are now in an enclosed four or five-story garage like we did for Walser and like we did for, we were planning to do, and for the other places where we have decided to work on densifying the showroom capabilities. So not that's dissimilar to what Richfield did with the Land Rover and the Honda dealerships along 494 on the north side, right? So, and, and our Subaru dealership did the same when they built their enclosure. So I guess my, my question is, that anybody propose to the folks at Luther that they do that instead? And, and, and did that ever come up, I guess, is my question, because that is prime real estate for the, the transit-oriented housing and other things like that that we're trying to do in that area. And if they, if we did and they said no, you know, that's a community development question more so than a planning question, because all you're here to do is to say, are they complying or not complying? I get that, but my open question is, did we, did we try?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLisandro, yes, we tried a lot, we had many, many meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, staff was very interested in finding potential other uses, for example, that could occupy the site. We had a grand opening this week at another dealership in town where they combine corporate offices, for example, with, with the car dealership. I know that Luther companies looked heavily at that issue. Ultimately, they decided that that was not something they could do, and they feel like they are stretching the floor area that's proposed on the, as it is for the Kia dealership.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Markergard. Mr. Mayor, I guess the, the, the fact of the matter is here, there's, it doesn't sound like there's an option for us to, John, you have, sorry, Councilmember Nelson has a point.
Why don't you finish your point, and then I'll call him.
Yeah, I, I guess, I can't find a way to make this not happen by, by our current laws, codes, but we may want to consider maybe that provision after nine years doesn't need to apply anymore, and we consider bringing that back to council for some view into that, especially when we're talking about areas like this where we're trying actively to do something very different.
I, I appreciate your, your input and appreciate your, your perspective on this. I'll, I'll provide the perspective of being on the council at that time.
Yep.
This was a, I'll say it nicely, a very contentious issue.
I bet.
And, and I appreciated that the fact, the fact that the staff and the, the business owners ultimately got to this compromise. And understand, nine years was, has, has passed, and, and we've seen the development of the transit-oriented development in this area and the growth in this area. I would be hesitant, personally, I'd be hesitant to go back on an agreement from nine years ago, just because the conditions have changed and we think we, there might be a, you know, a carrot there that we could possibly get. If you recall, the orange line wasn't there at the time, and, I mean, the transit-oriented development was kind of a dream at that point. And so, I mean, from a, from the perspective of somebody who was there and in the discussion, and Councilmember Lohman could bring it forward as well, I mean, I just, you, I think you're right in terms of the fact, I don't know that we can find a way to, to change this on the fly, as we sit at the dais here, and I don't know that I would want to, given the agreement that was reached nine years ago between the city staff and, and the, and a number of the different folks in this area, so.
I, I would agree with you on the fly, but are you suggesting that we don't maybe take a look at revisiting it at some point?
We, we could at least, I think, look at possible modifications, understanding that, you know, an agreement was made nine years ago.
Sure.
Hmm.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate Councilmember DeLisandro's thoughts. I will just say that I disagree because I do, I do see a path, because I don't support this as, as I see it right now. The plain language of it says we may. Don't say we have to. We aren't bound to do it, it says we may, in our discretion, and I look at this and I don't see anything about it that's consistent with the Penn American District Plan. Second of all, I don't think that not even getting to 50% of the compromise of .6 versus 1, I mean, every, every other place in C5 has to be at a FAR of 1. They, the compromise was .6, they didn't even get halfway there. I don't think that's substantial. I don't think that's, I don't think that's even close. I mean, by its definition, it's not even half, it's not even halfway there. And so I, I don't support this at all. I, I think it's completely inconsistent with the vision of it, completely inconsistent with what the council wanted to do, from my understanding, nine years ago, I wasn't there, but this was a compromise, they didn't reach even the compromise solution. And so I don't support it, and I think we have more than enough in here to say no. It says we may if we want to. If they don't mean it, we may do that, but we don't have to.
May I ask a quick clarification? I, I think I might have misunderstood. I thought that the .6 was the requirement of C5, but you're saying that it's the requirement of the compromise prior to 2015 of C5?
Correct. I believe C5 is 1-
Then I agree with you.
...and the compromise is .6.
Okay.
I mean, they're at, they're at 26% of C5.
Understood.
They're not even at half of the compromise.
Yeah. So I guess, Mr. Mayor, why would we, in your opinion, given you being on the council at the time, why would you concede this compromise position that's so beyond what you were willing to compromise before? If the, if the, if the, if the owners, the, the actual automobile, you know, the dealerships were involved in that compromise, why, why would we not consider it good faith that they bring us something that's in, in, in congruence with the compromise that they were a part of creating?
Agreed, and that's a good point, councilmember, and appreciate that. I think also, I think beyond the, the compromise that was made nine years ago is the reality of, of nine years since, the reality of today. And I think we'll see that when we talk South Town very soon, because there's some significant concessions there as well, because the, the compromises and the discussions that were made, or the, the discussions and the decisions that were made nine years ago about that overall complex, I think, might not be the same as what we're going to be seeing when, when the South Town proposal comes forward. So from my perspective, it's a, it was a compromise, it was a compromise based in nine years ago, and now we look at the reality of today, and perhaps it, it isn't quite there. I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, I, you know, and I'm, I'm going to suggest, and we can go back and forth on this, what I'm going to suggest, councilmembers, one of you to perhaps propose a motion of denial, we'll see where it is, and then we'll go from there. So, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Before I move to deny it, I would just say that the reality of the situation, we've seen significant construction in that area in nine years, significant construction that is consistent with the Penn American plan, and to say that the reality is, is that we can't do that defies the reality on the ground in that area. We've, we've approved multiple projects in that area. South Town is actually another example. I mean, yeah, they got the sports thing, but they have the whole rest of the project to roll out, and I think we'll push them to get better in their plan, if they're here tonight, we'll hear that from them. So I would move to deny, I'm sorry, I don't have the motion in front of me, the, I just, I'd move to deny. Sorry if you need more words.
Councilmember Nelson, if I could put words in your mouth, so I'm going to simply use, you're going to move to deny the major revisions to preliminary and final development plans for the approximate 59,000-square-foot auto dealership facility as, as outlined in item 3.1. Is that what you're?
Those were totally the words I was going to say.
Thank you.
What we're declining to approve is what we're doing, right?
That's, yes.
Okay. Yes. Second.
We've got a motion and a second.
Mayor, as a, as a point of clarification, as I understand the discussion, it's turning on clause number three here, and on the overhead related to the substantially advancing in the statement for that I'm hearing, is that the council members, the motion and the second are believe that, that the modification before us is not substantially advancing. Is that accurate?
I'm more weighing on the word "may."
But I, but yes, I, I think you have to have one of these reasons, right? So, so, yes, Ms. Mander, shout out, what I would say is it does not substantially advance because they, they denied to use even the provision, the, the compromise provision that the planning department had offered to them to make it through the streetscape, so.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Carter, a question?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question would be, what happens if the council denies this tonight?
Mr. Markergard?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter, one practical implication on that, I believe there's a timeframe in which they could not reapply if it's denied this evening. Another consideration would be, do you want to deny it or have staff prepare a resolution of denial and bring that back to you at a future meeting? That would be another clarification.
And I'm sorry, explain again, if you could, Glenn, the, the difference between denying it, as we've laid it out here, and a resolution of denial that you would bring back at a, a future meeting?
Yes. Mayor Bussey, the, typically when there's a denial, staff brings forward a resolution of denial that highlights kind of all the reasons that the council's denying it, which if there was a legal challenge, is helpful.
Got it.
And so what I heard you say is that the applicant said that they're already kind of stretching themselves to do, to make this work. If we were to go back and say, no, we want a multi-level building, and, and I don't, if I recall correctly, the example that was given was like the Toyota dealership, that was a kind of a different situation because they were wanting to merge their corporate and their dealership, like it was a great opportunity. Like, I guess, I'm, my concern is that we are placing, like, these, maybe what could be unrealistic expectations on them as a business, like how do we know they can even make something like that happen, right? And so to me, it's like, it could sit as it is currently, or they could make improvements to it. So if we deny it, then it might just sit there the way it is for many more years, or we could approve it tonight, and although it's not what we want it to be, it's still, I mean, their dealership is not going anywhere, so it could be improved.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter, I would say that's true, that is definitely a possibility. I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, they are here tonight and certainly could address that.
Councilmember Rivas?
I just have a quick question in regards to three. It says the proposed modifications will substantially advance any applicable zoning ordinance provisions. Can you explain how this project fulfills that?
Mr. Markergard?
Yes. Yeah, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Rivas, yeah, so we can walk through these one by one if you'd like. In terms of building placement, we have buildings that are closer to the street, parking to the side and rear with the redevelopment. In terms of parking placement, very similar. In terms of streetscape enhancement, definitely a lot more street trees, some more landscaping features, benches along the street. In terms of building design, we have a lot more windows in the building, at least along the street frontages, to help provide transparency, eyes on the street, and an attractive streetscape. In terms of building height, it's meeting code requirements, I believe a minimum of 60% of the side of the building needs to rise to a height of 25 feet, which actually 100% of it does. In terms of landscaping, they'd be adding things like trees and islands, a lot more trees than exist on the site today. So those would be the key, key ways it would be advancing those, those items.
Thank you. So we've had a couple of questions, obviously, and both pro and con trying to figure our way through this. I see the applicant is here, and then Mr. Griffith is here. I, I think it would be helpful to perhaps, if you give us a quick overview, Mr. Griffith, and-
Certainly.
As you bring up your entire legal pad, I'm saying a quick overview here.
That's just for me making notes of everything you say. Mr. Mayor and Council, Bill Griffith, representing the applicant. I, I, I understand the comments, but, but you have to understand the context. This is four parcels today, is it four buildings, three buildings? Car dealerships, auto dealers, this site has been owned by Luther for a very long time. They're not going to give up this site. So what you will do tonight, if you, if you turn down this application, and it was a very complicated discussion at the Planning Commission, and yet your Planning Commission, who believes very much in the Penn American District, voted unanimously to support- who believes very much in the Pan American District, voted unanimously to support this application. They looked at all of the findings. They looked at the street trees. They looked at the improvements. They looked at the building placement, and they ultimately said, job well done. We understand that this is not going to be a multi-story, multifamily building. This is not a mixed-use building. You cannot make a car dealership into a mixed-use building. And so, what will happen tonight is Luther Companies will go back to the drawing board, and they'll look at how to renovate those buildings, because they're not going to give up this spot. They can't give up this spot. It's very difficult to locate a dealership today. And so, they really pressed this project. And if you look at what the dealer themselves required, they went two and three times beyond what the dealer required them to do. The showroom is two to three times larger already than what the dealer required them to do. The landscaping, the plantings, the placement of the buildings, the images, we could show you the images. I know you don't have time tonight, but I want you to understand just how far this applicant went to meet those Pan American District standards. And yes, it's not going to be a 10-story building. It's not going to be a mixed-use building. It is ultimately a car dealership. But what you have to ask yourself tonight, and I was around for those hearings, and they were contentious. It went on for five months, five months of discussion to ultimately get to a compromise. Not that it be .6. That .6 is in code. Those findings are for this council to be able to move from .6 to something else, because those other issues that are on the table that Mr. Markengard talked about are being advanced. So, that's what you have tonight. You have a car dealership that's going to redevelop four parcels of land and provide you with sewer right-of-way for your sewer upgrades. You know, you have a problem in that district with sewer. One of the provisions of this, one of the public benefits of this application is that that sewer right-of-way will be provided to the city. And we'll do that by moving the buildings where they're located. This project will provide a significant investment in this community, and it won't freeze this property in time. That's what the compromise was about. Let's not freeze these properties in place. They are car dealerships. That's part of the legacy of Bloomington. You're at 494 and 35W, and that's how we got here. And would everybody like to have a C5, transit-oriented development here? Everybody but my client? Perhaps. But we're not going to freeze this site in time. They're going to look at renovating those existing buildings. And you're going to get something very different from what you have here. So, please do not put them in a time capsule. They have moved as far as they can possibly move with this auto dealership. It's a Kia dealership. It's not a Land Rover dealership. It's not a BMW. It's not an Audi dealership. It's going to be a Kia, a very beautiful Kia dealership in your community, and you will be proud when you see what's been done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. So, Council, it gives us a bit of perspective of the applicant here. We've got a motion and a second on the table. And I understand the idea of a motion, preparing an ordinance to, you know, a resolution, excuse me, of denial. Is it possible that we get clarification on this and then move forward with the resolution of denial for the formality?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I think maybe if the motioners are amenable to just friendly amendment, that they would be voting to direct staff to prepare findings for denial and bring those back at a subsequent meeting.
Works for me.
That will work? Okay. So, the motion is to, the friendly motion, the friendly addition, amendment, is to direct staff to prepare a, say the words again, findings of denial and bring it back at a future meeting. Next meeting. So, in essence, basically, the next meeting, this would be the informal denial, and the next meeting would be the formal denial where we pass the resolution. So, is that clear to everybody?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. So, let's assume, let's say that that does not pass, then somebody else would then pick up the existing original motion and move that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Dalisandro. Everybody clear on what we're voting on here? All right. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Name.
Motion fails five to two, or two to five, however we officiate, two to five. So, with that, that, Council, I would look for a motion to approve a major revisions to preliminary and final development plans for an approximately 59,030 square foot auto dealership facility, subject to the conditions of code requirements attached to the staff report.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember, why am I blanking on names tonight? Muah. Yeah, I know, I know. We have a motion and a second on item 3.1. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to, with Councilmembers Dalisandro and Nelson in opposition. Thank you for the conversation on that. Thanks for bringing that forward. We will move on in our agenda, and thank you, Councilmember Rivas, for the consent agenda tonight. We already took care of item 4.1. It was a timed item. We're moving on to item 4.2 now. This is our first public hearing of the evening. This is a public hearing regarding Southgate Apartments, rezoning at 8100 and 870 12th Avenue South and 1001 and 1101 East 80th Street. And we have with us this evening, we have from our Planning Department, Emily Hesbuck. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. One second. Yeah, so what we have before you is a rezoning of four properties called Southgate Apartments. And they'll be rezoned from R4 to RM24. I will wait just a second to show you the visual. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, yeah, so these are the four properties that are being proposed to be rezoned. Again, they're being proposed to be rezoned from R4 to RM24. Some of the restoring uses are single-family office to the north, and there is Smith Park to the west. Also, these properties are guided high-density residential, which is 10 to 150 dwelling units per acre. This slide shows the breakdown of the number of units in each building. Total, there are 244 apartments spread throughout these four buildings. Here are some of the standards for the RM24 zoning district. One important thing to note is that, as it stands in the R4 zoning district, these properties are not in compliance, and moving them to the RM24 zoning district would actually bring them into compliance with the density range, as well as everything else within here is conforming with RM24 standards. Same with this table. The structure setbacks are met. The floor area ratio is met. It all matches with the RM24 district. As far as parking goes, the parking structure setbacks are met. Parking spaces is less applicable for this review. That's more for, related to how many units are actually within the apartment buildings. So, there's no specific requirement for a specific zoning district. And with that, the Southgate Apartments are consistent with the RM24 district intent and standards. They are also consistent with the guide plan designation of high-density residential, and staff recommends approval of the rezoning through the motion on the next slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions of Ms. Hesbuck? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, why? Why proactively rezon this? Is there a development that's in plan? And let me just be clear about the reason I ask. Is we proactively rezoned some property in the past, and then we saw what they wanted to do, and the council didn't like it, and then we got sued, and we lost. So, why?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, let me say two things. One is that, yes, there are potential future plans to add more apartment units, like three-bedroom units within the apartment buildings, so that would create more housing. And two, it's not exactly proactive rezoning, because they are not in conformance with the existing R4 density standard. So, it would be bringing them more into density conformance.
Follow-up question? So, if they're going to, because they have one and two-bedroom now, and if they're going to add three-bedroom into the existing, wouldn't that reduce the number of units?
Councilmember, or sorry, Mayor Councilmember Nelson, they are proposing to change some of the existing, like, community areas that they don't use into apartment units.
And so, to get to the why, is that why they need to do this, to do that change?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yes. To add more units, they need it to be a different zoning district.
That seems reasonable. Thanks.
Councilmember Rivas?
I just want to add to that. I mean, why not come to us with a transparent question? This is why we want to do it, rather than just say we proactively want to change the zoning. Just come to us and say what you want to do and why you want to do it. And I think it will be a lot more positive interaction. Instead of asking all these questions, we already, we will be aware why we're trying to change the zoning, I guess.
Possible good suggestion for the future. But, thank you. Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Nelson.
So, I just want to say that when I read the packet, it was pretty clear to me that they wanted to increase density, and that was the reason. So, I guess I don't want it to make it seem that the applicant was trying to, like, be deceitful or not transparent. Like, it's pretty clear in the packet that they're trying to increase for higher density, or they're trying to add units. So, I just want to make it clear for the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Carter. That is a good clarification. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that there isn't something I'm missing that this opens up, because there is significant amount of property. I actually am very, I'd be fine with looking at a proposal to develop more of that part of the property and all of that. I just didn't see all that in there. And so, I just want to be careful about what we do when we open this up, because we have stubbed our toe on it in the past.
Nothing wrong with being careful, Councilmember. Appreciate that. Councilmember Dalisandro?
Sorry, I apologize if I missed this portion of it, but really quickly, did we, so this is just about rezoning it. There is an expectation that we are going to see more property, more apartments built here, correct?
We just went over that, Councilmember.
Yeah, that's what I assumed. I heard it in the background. So, the question I'm asking is, I think that there was something in the packet about whether or not they were, there was proof of parking, right, that was involved. Is there anybody looking at, like, an opportunity housing ordinance options for low-income housing, or, you know, affordable housing options within this? Did we talk about that at all? Because I'm curious about whether or not some of these will become affordable units, or if there's an option that we can approach them about doing that.
I think the point we're doing now is the zoning change. I think it's possible in the future, as they come back with a proposal, that could be part of it. The opportunity housing ordinance elements could be part of it. But that, I mean, this is cart and horse kind of stuff right now. I think you got to do the cart first, and then the horse later.
Well, the reason I asked about it was because it mentioned that there was a requirement for parking related to the zoning change. And so, my point being that we have the ability to maybe compromise on parking if we have an opportunity housing ordinance thing there. And so, would that make it easier for us to make this change if we knew that we were going to potentially get some affordable units out of it? That's what I was, ultimately, that was the reason for my question.
Understood. And I don't know if, Ms. Hesbuck, has that been discussed? Have they gotten that far in the plans, or?
Mayor, that has not been discussed so far. Yeah.
Okay. I would encourage it, I guess, Mr. Mayor, because I think, I'm not a fan of this. I'm a fan of this change, because I think they're trying to do the right thing, which is create more, you know, potentially naturally affordable units, which is awesome, and that's a good location for it. If they can leverage that OHO so that we don't have to put them at risk of any kind of parking situation, problem area, or anything like that, especially so close to Smith Park like it is, I would think that would be a preference.
Thank you for the input, Councilmember.
You're welcome. I'm going to shut up now.
Any additional questions? If not, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing now. So, I will open the public hearing on item 4.2, public hearing for the Southgate Apartments rezoning at 8100 and 870 12th Avenue South and 1001 and 1101 East 80th Street. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.2 this evening? No one coming forward. Ms. Olson, is there anyone on the line?
Mr. Mayor, there's nobody online.
Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Council, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Council, any questions or any additional comment on this? If not, I would look for action on item 4.2.
Mayor, I'll move a motion to adopt an ordinance creating a new zoning use and other zoning regulations applicable to the, pardon me, I'm on the wrong one here. Let me get back to the right one here. I'm ready to move.
On the screen in front of you is probably the best place.
I better do that, because I'm ready to move here. Mayor, I'll move to adopt an ordinance, amending the zoning map by rezoning lands located at 1101 East 80th Street, 870 12th Avenue South, 101 East 80th Street, and 8100 12th Avenue South in the city of Bloomington, from R4 Multiple Family Residential to RM24 Multiple Family Residential.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Carter, to adopt the ordinance as stated by Councilmember Lowman so eloquently and perfectly, so I'm not going to try and repeat it, related to item 4.2 this evening. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Lowman, summary publication.
Mayor, I'll move a resolution to authorize summary publication of the ordinance, amending the zoning map by rezoning land locations at 1101 East 80th Street and 870 12th Avenue South, 101 East 80th Street, and 8100 12th Avenue South in the city of Bloomington, from R4 Multiple Family Residential to RM12 Multiple Family Residential.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Carter, for summary publication, related to item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, and now we will bring you right back for item 4.3. This is our second public hearing of this evening. Public hearing regarding our city code amendments regarding cannabis business zoning provisions. Ms. Hesbuck?
Good evening again. So, before you tonight, I have changes related to cannabis businesses, but specifically regarding zoning. So, tonight you won't be looking at the licensing piece. And I know we've talked about them before in tandem, but tonight specifically, you will be approving zoning uses. So, let's get started. So, you've seen this slide multiple times. So, again, tonight you're looking at the general zoning and performance standards. I just wanted to point out that it is scheduled on October 28th for the licensing changes to come to council. Here are the five bullet points that I kind of want you all to focus on tonight. So, again, the licensing changes are not included. We're going to be talking about zoning use types, definitions, zoning districts and approval types, use standards, and deletions from the zoning code. So, this table shows Bloomington zoning use types in relation to the state license type, and then also showing the zoning districts and approval types. So, many of the state license types do fall under existing uses. For example, cannabis retailer, we are going to consider retail sales and services. But at the bottom of the table, you can see the three new use types that we are adding: cannabis combination business, cannabis manufacturer, and cannabis testing facility. So, these three new uses will be conditional uses in the zoning districts as they are shown in the far right column. Um, additionally, not shown in this table is, um, that we also added low potency hemp edible manufacturing, um, in specific ways that the state said that we have to, so the state said that low potency hemp edible manufacturing is allowed in places that make their own alcohol, um, so we put that as a provision, um, within places that are like breweries, brew pubs, distilleries, taprooms, et cetera, um, and that is within the ordinance, um, just kind of like a small sentence in there. Uh, so the four new definitions that we are adding are related to the new uses, um, or new additions to the code, so low potency hemp manufacturing, cannabis combination business, cannabis manufacturing, and cannabis testing facility. Um, the use standards, again, we've said this a few times, but they haven't been finalized by the state, uh, so we haven't made those use standards yet, and the section in the code is just reserved for now, uh, and we will bring those back at some point when they become more finalized. And then we have the deletions, so this, um, is deleting all the places in chapters nineteen and twenty-one, the zoning code, where it references medical marijuana distribution facilities, because that is no longer relevant, um, given the new state laws. And, um, so with that, I will take questions, and then I do have a recommendation on this slide.
Thank you very much. Council, questions on this? No questions? Councilmember Alessandro?
One quick question about, um, the combination bis, no, I think it was the, are they called it a micro business and a mezzo business, or something like that? We're only recommending that that gets added to the T one, um, zoning, or is, is there a particular reason? What, what, what's contained, what kind of business is that, such that it should only be limited to that kind of zone?
Yeah, Mayor, um, Councilmember Alessandro, I added maps, so you can see specifically, okay, so you can see the T I district is transitional industrial, um, it's on Lyndale, so it's that very small blue part, you kind of can't even see it in this map. Um, we did that because we took, uh, areas that, um, had like manufacturing and retail and, you know, kind of, in a mezzo or micro business, you can do multiple things, so we wanted to compare those uses and how they currently exist, and see what zoning districts they kind of overlap in, um, and from that information, um, we kind of fell upon the transitional industrial district.
I guess my question is, what, what is unique about those businesses that we would limit it to just that district, as opposed to all the other businesses that were giving multiple district, or multiple zoning district options?
Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro, what's unique about it is that you can do multiple different things, so, at, in, in one spot, so it's not limited to just manufacturing, or limited to just retail, um, like, you can have multiple different uses, and so I think therefore we wanted to limit it more, um, because of the diversity of uses possible in one spot.
Okay, so, in other words, if we had a distribution, if we had a manufacturing facility outside of this area, and they wanted to put a retail storefront on it, they would not be able to do that, except if it was in this little area right here, correct?
Mayor, um, Councilmember Alessandro, within that license, no, they wouldn't be able to.
Okay. So, I, I guess my, I have a question about whether or not that's over limiting, but I don't think it's relative, we can always change it later, I guess. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman?
Just a quick question, I saw the, the correspondence from the, uh, advisory board of health, I mean, that is not what's, uh, discussion, I just wanna be sure, okay, we're good, thanks.
Any others? All right. Thank you so very much, don't go too far, uh, this is a public hearing, item four point three, public hearing regarding city code amendments to cannabis business zoning provisions. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point three this evening? Ms. Tolsman, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, there's nobody online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Council, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item four point three, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point three.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman to close the public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item four point three. Anything else on this? Council, any other questions, concerns, comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, I apologize for this question, but, um, I got confused by Councilmember Alessandro's question, so the only place you could actually manufacture and sell is in that one district, and the reason I ask that is, there's several other areas where you could brew beer and sell it, and, I guess, why the inconsistency between there, is there a safety issue, or is there some other issue, why you couldn't do the same thing as we would for a, a brewery, or taproom, or something of that nature? So, maybe I misunderstood, it's just from what Councilmember Alessandro said, I, it confused me.
Ms. Hessbeck?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, um, that's a fair question, so, uh, I kinda got stuck on the manufacturing and retailing, but also in addition, like, they can practice cultivation, manufacturing, purchasing, processing, packaging, sale, um, so there's kind of just a wide variety, and I think we, uh, wanted to stay on the safe side, um, which is, yeah. Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Council? If not, Council, I would look for action on item four point three this evening. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd move to adopt an ordinance creating a new zoning uses and other zoning regulations applicable to cannabis businesses, thereby amending chapters nineteen and twenty-one of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt the ordinance creating new zoning uses and other zoning regulations applicable, applicable to cannabis businesses. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six one, with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Uh, Councilmember Muah, summary publication?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I move, uh, I make a motion to, a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance creating new zoning uses and other zoning regulations applicable to cannabis businesses, thereby amending chapters nineteen to twenty-one of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman for summary publication on item four point three, no further council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, thanks for sticking on with us this evening. We'll move to item four point four, our next public hearing on the agenda, this regarding an airport parking facilities moratorium, and we have Mr. Mark Agard, our planning manager, and Kevin Toski, our assistant city attorney, will lead us through this, good evening, gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council members, uh, tonight, uh, what you have before you, uh, is a proposed...
Glenn, if I could ask you to get into the mic a little bit, a little bit closer?
There we go, how's that?
Much better, thank you, sir.
Yes, uh, so tonight, what we have before you is a proposal to enact a moratorium on, and begin a study of airport parking facilities. Uh, this moratorium would be effective up to twelve months, uh, or until the study is complete and any related code amendments are adopted. In terms of why a moratorium, uh, back on September ninth, the city council had some discussion on this issue, and requested further study of airport parking facilities. Uh, we are also aware that there have been multiple discussions of privately initiated code amendments, and having a moratorium provides an opportunity to address these issues really in a comprehensive manner, and, uh, not be in a reactive mode responding to those privately initiated code amendments. In terms of the study, uh, we're proposing that that would include a, a variety of components, we're proposing it would start immediately, and include outreach with the various operators, we would look into where the use is occurring, especially at hotel properties, we would, talk about where expansion of airport parking is proposed in the community, and the compatibility of those potential locations, we would look at how other cities regulate this land use, and the potential need for additional standards or design criteria, which could result in, uh, city code amendments. So I'll let, uh, Mr. Toski talk about some legal considerations.
Sure, good evening. Good evening.
I think he just added it.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members, uh, Kevin Toski, assistant city attorney, um, just to kind of ground us in the, the legal authority to do this, it's in the municipal planning act four sixty-two point three-five-five subdivision four, the, so there's explicit authority, um, to enact a moratorium, uh, per the process that's in state law, so, cities do these for a variety of reasons, several cities did them for cannabis most recently, uh, the city of Bloomington most recently did one in twenty-twenty on self-storage facilities, so, uh, the similar process is being followed here, so, um, the application is to citywide airport, uh, parking land uses, airport parking facilities, uh, we can go up to one year, uh, according to state law, so unless council lifts it earlier, so, um, I don't know what the, the term might be on the study, but we'll get started on that, and then it can be lifted earlier. Um, in twenty-twenty, the, the, uh, self-storage moratorium went into effect June twentieth, and was lifted the following May, so that was within the year. Uh, the prohibitions are the establishment of any new airport parking facilities in the city, uh, ci, and city will not accept or act on the applications or requests related to airport parking facilities during that, uh, moratorium period. Uh, we will also put it in writing that we will not take in any enforcement actions on currently existing airport parking facility uses, uh, so that's actually in the ordinance, and we're committing to that not doing any enforcement during this period either. Um, and then there's an exception for repair and maintenance on the currently existing airport parking, uh, facility uses, so, uh, repair and maintenance actions, um, are allowed during this period. Uh, why a resolution, uh, that makes the moratorium effective immediately and authorizes a study, so, um, you'll see that the resolution, or the motion for the resolution comes first, and that's because it authorizes the study, and you have to do that to get to the ordinance, so that's why we do that. Um, and I talked about the past moratorium was with, uh, self-storage facilities, and we are following the, the similar process that we did back then. Um, it actually amended city code, and then we'll come back with a new ordinance to, uh, take the moratorium out of city code, and then whatever amendments there might be to city code after that, so, that's our process, uh, going forward.
So in summary, uh, staff does recommend adoption of the moratorium, uh, we have three motions before you tonight, the first would order the commencement of a planning study, that's a resolution, the second, an ordinance establishing the moratorium, and then third, resolution directing summary publication, we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions on this? Pretty straightforward, very good. Thank you, gentlemen, don't go far. This is a public hearing, and I will now open the public hearing on item four point four, our airport parking facilities moratorium, and I think this will be the, the first public hearing where we actually have folks speaking, and so I, I didn't mention in our earlier public hearings, what we do is, uh, limit public comment to five minutes each, as designated by the shot clock on the wall, and, uh, when it hits zero, I will cut you off, not because I'm mean, but because we wanna make sure that everybody has the same amount of time, and we don't let folks go overtime, and, um, so that, that will be the plan as we move forward. Would anyone like to address the council during this public hearing on item four point, four point four? And if you could identify yourself and sign in?
Uh, yes, my name is Robert Coleman. Hi, so I was, um, it doesn't, it's kind of hard to say whether I think that this is a good idea, because we don't really know what, we don't know what the, the plans for, like, what, uh, what potentially could be changed about the, uh, the city's policy relating to remote airport parking, um, because, uh, in the, uh, I think that what we have currently is a, is a good idea, that these should be, uh, phased out in the, the places where we want to have the high-density, um, redevelopments, and I think, uh, watching some of the previous meetings, I remember when Park and Fly came through and wanted an extension to their development, uh, timeline, they were, uh, for one year because of the market conditions, they went through the normal processes to get that extension, and it was approved, and then I remember, uh, being over here, uh, when Park and Go came through, and, uh, the, the vibe was very different, in terms of, uh, Park and Go, uh, not following the, uh, the deadlines and, uh, wanting, um, and instead wanting to change the rules, uh, relating to how remote airport parking is going to be phased out, instead of just, um, you know, getting that, you know, getting a one-year extension, since then there has been a fed rate cut, um, and it, it was a little confusing, uh, listening to, because I, I, based on what the, uh, the representative of Park and Go said during that meeting, and I'm assuming that this is the, uh, that this is the culmination of those efforts, um, it doesn't really feel like, uh, that situation should rep, should result in a change in the policy of the city council, because from when I watched that, uh, that discussion, it was mostly, it seemed like internal office politics, and not really something that related to the, uh, the application of the city code, um, because we know that Park and Fly, you know, they went through the normal methods, and then Park and Go, they didn't, they didn't meet deadlines, they didn't pay their fine, and that was one of the reason why it was rejected, um, and some of the things that were said by the representative were confusing, because, um, you know, stuff like, we can't make the, we can't make our redevelopment make financial sense without having, you know, the airport parking in the, the basement, like, there, there's no way that they can make it work without the cash cow in the basement, but, uh, even though we see down the block, right next door, hotels, uh, multifamily housing, right there, doing just fine, it seems like, you know, built, uh, and functioning fine, and it just seems like, it's hard to say whether it's a good idea if we don't know whether we're going to be strengthening the, um, the phasing out of airport parking in these locations versus if we're weakening it, if we're weakening it, then I don't think this is a good idea at all, but it's hard to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Four point, what is it?
Four point four. Others wishing to speak tonight? Ms. Tolsman, is there anyone on the line right now?
Mr. Mayor, there is somebody online, a Justin M., but I'm not sure what agenda item Justin is here for. So Justin, if you can hear me, can you let me know what item you're here for?
Justin, are you able to, to hear the proceedings tonight?
Do they know how to unmute? I had that issue last week. I think it's start.
All right, while we try and get that straightened away? Oh?
Yep.
There we go.
Council mayor and council members, so, thank you. Um, I was on for consent, item number six point three.
Oh, okay, so we, we are past that, you understand, uh, we're past that.
Yep, 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 yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on item four point four this evening? If not, uh, council, no one on the phone, no one in the chambers coming forward, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point four.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Alessandro to close the public hearing on item four point four, no further council discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Uh, so I, I, I will say, Council, I think this, uh, is a, is a good step, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of moratoriums, to be honest, but I think this is a, a, the right step in terms of what we're trying to accomplish here, it gives us an opportunity to look at this, as, uh, Mr. Mark Agard said, as a more comprehensive view, rather than trying to deal with these one-offs and these individuals coming forward, and to determine, to determine some consistency in what we're trying to do, and to figure out ultimately, as actually Mr. Coleman said, what the goal is, what we're trying to accomplish, what we want to do with all of this. Uh, I, I'm looking forward to learning more about the study, and seeing how the study's put together, and, and what staff is gonna bring together on all of this, but I do think this is probably, this is the way to go right now, especially considering all the, the moving parts that we have around, uh, off-airport parking in the city of Bloomington right now. Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I agree with that, um, um, just, um, I think I-
Just, I think I asked this question before and maybe, maybe we have more clarity on it now since this came back to council. We didn't have this in the work plan for the planning department and so I'm curious about whether or not we're inserting something that's a big project, a small project, what are they going to stop doing to do this instead, et cetera? Do we have any visibility into that? Thanks.
Mr. Markergard, any thoughts now that you've had some time to think about this a little bit? Where this fits into the staff capacity in the planning staff?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, council member, you're right, it's not on the planning commission work plan, so we don't have time allotted for it. What we plan on doing is beginning some initial components of the study and then doing still more work in 2025. We would add it, or propose to add it to the 2025 planning commission work plan. We think there's some things that we can do still in 2024 by shifting some things around.
So basically get some work done in the next 90 days where you're able to, but then make a part of the 2025 work plan as for, and appropriate the time as needed.
That's correct, Mayor.
Comfortable with that, council member?
Yes, assuming it's more important than the other things that are going to be proposed to us, yes. That sounds great, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to clarify quickly. So we have the issue at Park and Go that they were out of compliance and this sort of tolls that until we get back there. What happens after we do this? Because I mean, just making the assumption that we're not going to abandon the idea of airport parking being temporary and that we want to do something different. That's what the study is going to look at and how we deal with that. But what happens on day one after we lift the moratorium, pass the new ordinance? Are they automatically, assuming it's not too different from this or assuming it's not just you can do that?
Mr. Verbrugge?
I guess my biggest thing is I want to encourage them to keep working towards coming into compliance with what the rules were previously. You know, get the plan in, work with planning department and get the project moving forward. And I just don't want this to be a reason to slow that down.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Nelson, I think your comment at the end of the question is actually what I understand to be the priority from your thought process here, right? Because answering your question would sort of presume the outcome of the study and I don't want to do that, right? So I can't describe to you what's going to happen on day one after we terminate the moratorium and adopt an ordinance. So I think you did a fine job of just explaining where the lay of the land is today and, you know, we'll continue to work with all the interests in the district.
Good, thank you. Other questions, council? Councilmember Lassandro?
Just, I'm curious how many current parking facilities are, do we have today versus do we have any that are being proposed that are in flight right now that are going to be impacted by this moratorium?
Mr. Verbrugge? Ah, Mr. Markergard instead. Mr. Markergard.
Yes, Mayor, council member, we have two existing remote airport parking facilities. There is discussion by private parties on additional potential applications. And then on the hotel airport parking, we have one that has been approved and is legal. And then we have several others, we believe, in the community through online advertisement that are doing that as well, hotel airport parking.
I think several is a generous understatement. And I think all it takes is to go into the hotel parking lots after a snowfall and see all the cars that are plowed in, basically, they haven't moved. So it's pretty easy to see. Councilmember Lowman?
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to say I appreciate your passion around this particular issue and your concern about this for several years. I know we've been trying to get this one resolved. I don't know if you want to move this yourself.
I want to make sure everybody's questions are answered. And then I, seeing every question answered, I would look for motion, I would look for action on item 4.4.
Well, I guess I'll help out with that.
Councilmember Lowman, why don't you take it?
You got a question? Oh. I'll go ahead and move this thing that's on the, are we doing this one at a time or is it?
One at a time, please.
Okay, we can't do it all together?
Nope.
Darn it. All right. I'll move a resolution commencing a planning study assessing the need for an amendment to the city's official controls and a moratorium on land use actions within the city of Bloomington related airport parking facilities.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the resolution commencing a planning study assessing the need for an amendment to the city's official controls and a moratorium on land use actions within the city related to airport parking facilities. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Lowman?
Mayor, I'll move interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on land use actions within the city of Bloomington related airport parking facilities pending completion of a planning study assessing the need for an amendment to the city's official controls, thus amending chapter 21 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Muah, adopting an interim ordinance establishing a moratorium. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Lowman?
I'll move a resolution directing summary publication of the ordinance, an interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on land use actions within the city of Bloomington related to airport parking facilities pending completion of a planning study assessing the need for an amendment to the city's official controls, thus amending chapter 21 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication on item 4.4. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you much. Staff on this one, this is, I know, kind of came at you fast over the last couple of weeks and I appreciate the work that has gone into this to make this happen and looking forward to the study that's going to be on the other side of this and be interested to see where we end up. So thanks much for this. We will make, we will move on to item 4.5, our final public hearing of the evening. This regarding a South Town partial redevelopment at 7803 Penn Avenue South. Mr. Centenario, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I do have a presentation for you. Great, thank you. So the last public hearing for you tonight relates to partial redevelopment plans for South Town Shopping Center at 7803 Penn Avenue South. And we're all familiar with the South Town Shopping Center. It is a very large parcel of land that represents a tremendous development opportunity. The owner and applicant, Cross Anderson, has demolished quite a bit of building space that housed Herburgers and Toys R Us. And so this image shows those buildings, but you can see that if you drive out there today, those are no longer there. And in addition to what you're seeing on this graphic, some additional demolition would take place to implement the plans that they're proposing. So when we have multi-phase developments, we have two different plans, if you will. We have a PDP that stands for Preliminary Development Plan. That's really what the plan is at full buildout. And then we have a final development plan, which is what is being proposed to be built in a particular phase. So what you're seeing here on the screen is the PDP. A majority of South Town would remain retail as it is today. You see the proposed retail, the plus, it says plus or minus 60,000 square feet on two levels, 120,000 square foot Dick's House of Sport. That's the phase that's being proposed for you tonight. And immediately on the northeast corner, there are future phases that's been identified by the applicant is a medical office building. And that is not being proposed for you tonight. That is a future phase that could come soon or it could be several years. What is not shown, well, I'll get to a different slide in a moment. But this is a graphic from the final development plan series. We're zooming in a little bit on the site and you can see where it says lot three. That's where the medical office building is being at least preliminarily proposed. So with this particular phase, that's going to be, that's going to remain a vacant site. And so it's going to be very obvious that that would be a future development pad. But you can see on this graphic just how much, if you compare what's on the plan versus what's out there today, how much of a difference the parking facilities would be implemented. There is hardly a tree or a shrub on the site and this would really bring those parking facilities into compliance. What you're also seeing is a lot more pedestrian accommodations within South Town that does not exist today. Pedestrian improvements are pretty sparse, but with this, with this project, there would be quite a few sidewalk connections, especially within Knox Avenue, which is when you get north of American, that's a private street, as well as connections between the north and south, east-west parts of the shopping center. So what is unique, and this goes back to the discussion on the auto dealership earlier, was the zoning on within the Penn American District Plan. And South Town actually has a split zoning situation. The majority of it is C3, freeway commercial. But then the southeast corner of the site, which is the northwest corner of Knox and American, has a different zoning district. And there were, similar to other sites, there were negotiations on what isn't appropriate or what do we foresee as redevelopment looking like from a density perspective. C3, in this case, there is a point four minimum FAR. And then for C5, we have that 1.0 FAR that you were discussing earlier. So that site, that northwest corner of American and Knox, on their PDP, they're not showing a development phase. This is an extremely great site for a high-density development. And so in the conditions of approval, we've proposed language that essentially retains the requirement that this be a development site, although there isn't a particular plan for it today. Another graphic, just kind of without the aerial image, showing essentially the negotiated FAR minimums for South Town and then you see that corner site. And then what's not part of this application tonight is east of Knox, which are identified for future office uses and that has a separate FAR. One of those pedestrian enhancements that helped us make the findings that there is a public benefit is some pedestrian improvements where Lucky Thirteen's is. You have the Orange Line BRT, but if you look at the graphic on the right, that leads to and from the BRT tunnel. And there's a nice trail that goes under the tunnel, but then the crosswalk just leads you right into a parking lot. That's not a pleasant experience for a pedestrian and frankly, it's not safe. So as part of this project, the applicant would construct a sidewalk that connects from that crosswalk that you're seeing on the screen to the shopping center. In terms of the building itself, we're pretty familiar with the theme for Dick's that that would be continued. In terms of the color schemes, it's a mix of materials that we're very comfortable with. There are some minor modifications that would be needed to meet city code, but we've identified that with the applicant and we haven't heard about any heartburn with those modifications. So from a building material perspective or building design, we are in compliance. And what's, the public hearing relates to a plating variance. And so this is a preliminary plat and is just full of very detailed information. But essentially, city code requires that for park dedication fees, we would have to collect the entirety of park dedication fees for all of the existing and future phases for South Town Shopping Center. We don't, we're not sure what will happen in the medical office. We're not sure what that phase on the northwest corner of Knox and American will look like. And so we are supportive of a variance to collect park dedication fees when a phase is being constructed. So it's not a removal of park dedication fees, park dedication fees, it's just a deferral until future phases are developed. We've done this with a variety of multi-phase developments. SIC is one that comes to mind, but there are several. And I'm now going to hand it off to the city's traffic consultant to talk about some of the traffic improvements.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kelsey Larson. I'm a traffic engineer with Bolton and Mink. As Mike said, yeah, we helped the city or did a traffic impact study on behalf of the city. And I'm really just going to talk about one area in particular and one condition of approval, really how we got to this recommendation. So we're zoomed in, looking specifically at, we have Penn on the left side of the screen. So 494 is at the top or would be at the top and then American Boulevard would be on the bottom. So this is the entrance at 79th Street as shown and there are two eastbound lanes entering the site. The area that we recommend improvement to is the extension of the eastbound lanes into the site. So you can see how currently that, after the Applebee's crosswalk, there's only about 60 feet and then the second, the outside lane drops as a right turn lane. We believe that this is a safety concern as drivers have to determine if they are going to get over and could be distracted not looking for pedestrians at that crosswalk. This is just a street level view from a driver's perspective. If you're coming into South Town along that eastbound approach, so you can see the crosswalk and then how shortly after that right turn lane would disappear or that second lane turns into the right turn lane and ends. So what we're recommending is to increase the distance of that second eastbound lane so that it extends beyond two of the drive aisles as shown. Now, the reason that we only recommend extending it, those two drive aisles instead of to the third one is if we were to extend it into that third drive aisle and bring it all the way up to that Kohl's crosswalk that's kind of highlighted or boxed there, we would have maybe a similar issue to what we see at the Applebee's where that lane would be dropping kind of right in a major crosswalk area. So we would recommend, and I guess the reason that we recommend extending it this far really has to do with the decision site distance for a vehicle driving 20 miles an hour, which would be kind of appropriate for someone driving through a parking lot. And that distance, we would prefer it to be much longer. We would prefer it to be about 400 feet. This is defined by ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. They define this decision site distance as the distance that is needed for a driver to detect an unexpected or difficult to perceive information source in a roadway environment that may be visually cluttered, such as a parking lot, recognize that threat and then determine to stop or change lanes. Now what's shown here on the screen is only 200 feet. So half of that ideal or preferred distance, however, 200 feet does happen to be the minimum distance that would be needed for the decision site distance at 20 miles an hour. So that is why we got to, I guess, this 200-foot distance. This slide is showing what the developer had proposed, which is only extending that eastbound lane one driver, drive aisle. However, this only brings that distance between the Applebee's crosswalk and the point of the lane ending to be about 135 feet, so less than that 200-foot distance. So I just wanted to point out kind of how we got to that recommendation and why we went with the 200-foot distance there.
So we are recommending approval. The condition related to those traffic improvements is incorporated into the conditions for your consideration. Three motions are before you. One for the preliminary found development plans, second for a preliminary plat to subdivide South Town, and then the third for a plating variance to defer park dedication fees. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario. Questions of Mr. Centenario? Councilmember Lowman?
Councilmember Loman?
So when we look at this, you know, the overall, you know, the Penn American Plan, how did staff kind of get to the, the conclusion that this made sense or fit into that vision of that plan? Because that's, that's where I'm kind of having difficulty trying to make this make sense, you know, in my mind, in terms of, you know, the, because, you know, I thought with the vision, we were talking about new city blocks, and, you know, I mean, this is a little bit different than that. And so, help me kind of understand, and I understand, you know, part of this is being pragmatic and getting what you, what you receive, but just help me understand how, how this fits into, I mean, I mean, certainly the numbers fit in there and that kind of thing, but help me have a better understanding of that.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, that's a really good question. And as a staff, we're often having to, to try to balance the vision in the Penn American District Plan and the reality of app, development applications that we receive, that the city is obligated to take action on. And so, there is a lot of pragmatism at play. But when we looked at the proposed development relative to certain density standards, you know, we were dealing with FAR again. It is, they are very close to the FAR minimums that were negotiated. And depending on how you slice up the, the lots, are in line with agreements that the applicant had with the city, from a FAR perspective. And so, we, we want much better pedestrian enhancements than what's existing today. And, you know, I certainly can say that I believe that's, that desire has been met. There, you know, the, the site overall really needs a lot of reinvestment. And this proposal does reinvest quite heavily in the eastern half of, of South Town. And I think with future phases of a medical office building and that northwest corner of American Boulevard and Knox, I think that represents, that furthers the vision of the Penn American District Plan, not only from just a, a building design, but then trying to support the orange BRT.
All right, well, thank you for that. You know, just a few of the things that I just have some concerns about, or, or, you know, in terms of the, as you, as you kind of make that analysis, and what I'm trying to have a better understanding of. And just, this is kind of where my question is kind of lying at, is, so certainly I, I see the improved conditions for pedestrian and bicycles, not really on the bicycle part. Improved access to areas through transit roadway, let's see, you know, trail connections surrounding neighborhoods, there's not really in this area that, that, that connection, but I'm curious about that part. New walkable streets and blocks. And that's, that's sort of where I, I'm just, and I know this is just the beginning of this, but that's not, you know, in there. So there is, you know, I could go on about the vision and that kind of thing, but that's, this is where I'm kind of, I'm still trying to question how, how this fits into that. I mean, especially this, this portion of it, and I know this is just one portion of it. And I'm, I have to, you know, blank that other part out, because it, it may not come to fruition at all. I'm just looking at just what I have before me, which is the athletic field, the proposed retail space there. Because it, to me, it feels a lot like what we've already seen in that space, just reconfigured.
Yeah, it is similar, it is similar.
Okay.
I think there, there are some very distinct enhancements that don't exist today. So if you look at the central spine within the development, that Morgan Avenue, that, that essentially creates a west and east block, if you will, of South Town. And that, that driveline does not go through the site today. You either have to, if, if you head north into the site, you either have to turn left or right, or if you drive straight, you're going into a parking lot. So that, that does create two blocks. There's, there's also, again, that there's not a ton of bike improvements, but as we have development, one of the things that we do is ensure that there's bike parking for every phase that, that comes in, to make sure that that basic bike infrastructure is there. The pedestrian enhancements that are outlined in the district plan, I think, are being met with this development. But it, it, it is not the perfect vision. This is not the perfect vision of what we ideally would want, but we also have to realize that there are some site challenges. And one being a major overhead line that, that goes for, goes through the middle of the site, where you can't put a building. So that is a major hurdle that doesn't, that doesn't have a solution. So the applicant has to work around that, that obstruction.
And I'm glad you brought that up. That was kind of my last thing. What are the other things? Because there's, those were mentioned in the, in the, in the, the overall Penn American Plan. Are there any of those things you want to mention related to that, that, that played into part of how, how staff got to this? I know we weren't a part of that, part of it, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not personally involved in all those discussions, but I know that sewer capacity is a major question in this area. There has to be quite a bit of upgrades done to the services in this area to support much higher density development.
Additional questions, comments? I think the question I had, and just to make it all make sense, or as councilmember Loma was talking about, as, as we saw the presentation earlier and included, we, we saw residential possibilities. We saw parking ramps, we saw green space. Are, are we, are, are those just so far in the future, we're not talking about them here? Or where's, where does that stand?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, the, I think the graphic you're referring to was a conceptual model that we required the applicant put together. It is, it is very conceptual. And so, it's just an, it's just a, a sketch-up model identifying what some of the improvements could look like in the future. As staff, we want to work towards a, a similar vision on this site, as well as the property to the east of Knox extended. We don't envision there being of, of, like a city park, but certainly that, the landscaping requirements, impervious surface requirements, those are all elements of a, an attractive urban environment.
Well, and I, as I, if I heard you correctly, as you were saying, the medical office building was in the future. That wasn't as firm as what the proposed Dick's Field or House of Sports is. And then, I mean, on the southern portion there, I mean, the existing Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is, is an existing empty building. And the bowling alley might as well be. I mean, it's a, there's, and, and what we had seen earlier was at least some, some thoughts. There, there are no, there, there are no plans in place, or there are no, are they, are they working toward that goal? Or where, where do we stand with that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, for, like, if you can see the, the line that is on this graphic, that is, that is creating a, create, would, would create a lot on the shared wall between the, but former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and the bowling alley. So that lot is roughly that C5 property. And there, you know, there have been discussions on what could happen there. Sure, the applicant can speak to some of the things that they've considered. But there are no definitive plans for what that would entail. That's why we felt it was really important to be very, very clear that this is a future development site. And we would like, we want to work towards that dense urban development on that corner.
Absolutely. All right. Council, any additional questions? All right. I mean, you did mention the applicant is here. The applicant would like to talk with us at all on this, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
And council, my name's Bob Cunningham with Kraus Anderson. I'd like to just kind of go way back to 1960, when South Town was built. And over the years, it's evolved and evolved again. And the fact that we've got essentially one-third of South Town available for redevelopment right now is something of a miracle. There's 20 other tenants in here that have varying terms, varying extensions, varying rights, varying parking fields. So we're walking the development type, tightrope right now. We tore down the functionally obsolete Toys R Us and Herburgers and some of the shop space, and that's still going on right now. But we're looking to replace some of the retail vibrancy that was previously at South Town by bringing Dick's House of Sports into the site. After we get done with Dick's House of Sports, we essentially run out of sewer capacity. So we are going to be put on some level of hold for some of the subsequent phases until that issue gets solved. But we are very pleased to be bringing so much of the improvements of stormwater and landscaping and trail extensions, and what we can be doing for South Town right now. So we are very pleased with the plan. We appreciate all of the assistance from the planning department to get us to this point this evening. Thank you. And we're looking for future great things at South Town. Right now, we're looking to invest tens of millions of dollars in the revitalization of South Town. And we're looking into the future at hundreds of millions of dollars of redevelopment in South Town.
Mr. Griffith?
Full evening, right? Mayor and council, Bill Griffith representing Kraus Anderson. I, I have a couple of comments that also relate to more recent history, that history when the Penn American Plan was developed, that history that you alluded to earlier, when those properties were rezoned. And there was a specific development agreement that was put in place with the city. And, and what it was really intended to do is to make sure that South Town could refurbish the buildings that it has and continue to serve those spaces, but also look to the future. And look to the future in a way that, you know, robust redevelopment at high density could occur. And the Kraus Anderson owner bought into that at that time. It was based on this specific development agreement, that they could, in stages and phases, move to higher and higher density, with the best opportunities being on the east side of the property. Now eventually, you would expect over time, that west side of the property would also redevelop to higher density. And so, one of the things that was discussed, and, and I, I believe resolved at the planning commission, was an understanding that, that floor, floor area ratio requirement would be satisfied with each phase of the development. That was very important to us, not the overall site, because you have one-story buildings that are in place. But each phase of the development would be moving to higher density. And so, as you look at just the Dick's House of Sports on the lot that it sits on, it's at 0.55 floor-air ratio. So a very significant move up from the one-story buildings. Now, if you look in, in today's retail environment, to land a Dick's at this location, at South Town, is a catalyst for so much more. Why? Because we're also looking at underground stormwater. That's, that's very important on a site like this, to have underground stormwater with modern infiltration on this site. That's a wonderful opportunity. The entire third that is being redeveloped will be landscaped. It will have trees, it will have the trail connection, as was mentioned, to the regional trail system. Very, very important that we can move incrementally on that vision. This does not move away from the vision. This is moving towards the vision with each phase moving to higher density. And that's why we had no problem with retaining as a condition of approval, it's simply a statement of what's in your, your zoning code, that 1.0 floor-air ratio in that key corner across from the transit station. And then further, as you move across Knox, there are other opportunities for that 1.0 minimum floor-air ratio, which is very prescriptive, and we understand that. So, this is something that is, has been unfolding for many, many years, and, and it really is moving in the right direction. And it's consistent with the agreement that we signed, I shouldn't say we, I didn't sign anything. The owner of the property signed almost 10 years ago. Last point, and I think it's very, very important. Your Penn American Plan identified almost 11 years ago that you had a sewer issue. And, and that's not something new. And the, the cities after it, they're working very hard, they're, they've engaged stakeholders. We would simply ask you, and you'll probably see communication to this effect, that you accelerate that process. We understand your staff, you know, has a lot on their work plan, but this is very, very important, because otherwise, there's a, basically a three-year hold on, on what comes next. And this is a great location for a medical office building, probably two or more. It could be, you know, this is first in Maine, this, this is a very important site. And we, the property owner understands that, the city understands that. We would ask you to think about on, on your separate item that comes before you perhaps next month, how can you accelerate that sewer building project? I know it's very complicated, it goes under 35W, and that's not why we're here tonight. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that that's really what's holding things up here. So, this can be done, this can be done in a way that makes sense, and it doesn't have to close any doors. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for both of your comments. Is there something more to add?
Just one more thing.
Yes.
You mentioned, Mr. Mayor, a moment ago, some of the images that we've provided on previous occasions. If it's possible, could we put those up on slideshow to just give an indication? And also, I wanted to indicate that we are intensely studying the C5, the C4, and the balance of the C3, medical office building layouts and structured parking, and how we can work all of this into the densities that will work for South Town.
I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Griffith, also. And understand that, yes, the sewer capacity is a, is an enormous issue and has been for some time. And, yes, we will talk with staff and see if we can get that on the fast track, because there's, there's nothing snazzier than talking about sewer expansion, that, that'll get people's attention. But I also, at the same time, want to make sure that, that, that the urgency is, is both ways as well. And because this is, this is just such a wonderful opportunity. We've talked about this, and, and we've been downtown, and we've had this conversation. And it's just, yes, first in, first in Maine is, is what this is. It's a prime spot within the city of Bloomington. And it, it would, it would not benefit any of us if this took 10 or 15 years to fill in. We, we need to work on this as a team and try to make this happen. And appreciate the, the layouts and the look of this here. The, the thought, after we talked about this last time, that came to my mind. I, I happen to be over on the east side in Bloomington Central Station. And if we're talking about green space in an urban area, that's a perfect example of green space in an urban area, is Bloomington Central Station, with the way that has come together in an equally difficult area, to be frank. I mean, an equally different area with planes going overhead every 30 seconds. So it's, it's a, it's doable, but it's a, it's a, a challenge. And so, I, I just, as the city seeks urgency in terms of solving these, these sewer capacity issues, I hope Kraus Anderson continues to seek urgency also in terms of moving forward with this and moving forward with a, a, a creative, a challenging, a, a outstanding concept that we can all be proud of. Council, any comments on this? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify with, with you, the staff. So, what we're approving tonight is the final for the Dick's House of Sporting, or someplace I'll probably never end up. But, but is, is it also the replat? Because we got Lot 1, this is Lot 2 that Dick's House of Sporting is going to be on. Lot 3 is where the future potential medical is. And then Lot 4 is essentially the, the C5 area. Am I understanding that right? And I just want to clarify exactly what we're looking to approve here.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, I'm happy to address that. So what you're being asked to take action on is the preliminary file development plans. So the final development plan is for the Dick's House of Sport phase and all of those parking improvements. The preliminary development plan is for the Dick's phase, the future medical office phase, and just an acknowledgement of how important that northwest corner of Knox and American is. The second is a prelim, only a preliminary plat, which is a little, which is a little unique. We usually see preliminary and final plats. But the preliminary plat does identify where those lots are envisioned. That does not subdivide any land. The applicant would have to come back for a final plat to actually change the lot boundaries. What's interesting about South Town is that it is an existing platted lot, and it's an absolutely massive, single lot. From a, from our perspective, you wouldn't necessarily need to replat. But I understand that there's a whole bunch of financial considerations why you may want to. And then lastly, what we're asking for is you to approve a resolution deferring park dedication fees. So it's not, again, it's really important, it's not eliminating fees, it's just deferring.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense. And so, I, I appreciate the clarification on what's final and what's preliminary, because I think, you know, candidly, I'm comfortable with the Dick's Sporting portion of it, but I want to see in the rest of it a much higher FAR, a much higher density. And so, one of the questions I have is, we have that lot that is already C5. Is there anything prohibiting us from rezoning the other lots to C5 to ensure that we get at least a, a one FAR on those? And, and the reason that, I mean, that I'm saying that is, you know, we talked earlier... And the reason that, I mean, that I'm saying that is, you know, we talked earlier in the evening about the Kia dealership and where we were at on this, I mean, this is right along 494. This has the highest potential possibility for usage of property within the community, and to allow it to be at .4 FAR, I think, in my opinion, is a huge miss for the community. And I don't think it's consistent with the plan that was originally developed, and there are those that were there when that happened. You know, my biggest fear and concern is that this is just going to get redeveloped as retail, as it is today with some tweaks to it and some differences to it based on the modern market. And I don't think that's what anybody wants, but if we keep getting fed this piecemeal and go, well, this is all they can do, and then that gets approved, that's all they can do, and that gets approved, I just, you know, that's my biggest concern. And based on, you know, what I've seen, based on seeing what the challenges have been in this area in terms of the vision and some pushback on that vision, and if you want my personal opinion, the city has been right all along about what should be here, and it should be a much higher use than simply retail. And I want to make sure that we don't fall into that trap.
Thank you, councilmember. All right, counsel, we still haven't opened public hearing on this, and I'd like to do that right now. Yeah, I did too. Open the public hearing on item 4.5. This is a public hearing regarding the South Town partial redevelopment at 7803 Penn Avenue. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on item 4.5 this evening? Mr. Coleman?
Hi. So is the public hearing about the preliminary and final development plans, or is it for the resolution for the plotting variance? Because I heard that said.
I'm sorry, I squ...
Am I allowed to talk about the preliminary and final development plans, or is it just the resolution for the plotting variance? As I was saying earlier.
All that was in the packet, you're, and this is a public hearing on that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Hi, my name is Robert Coleman, and I think that I've spoken about this before, and I think it's kind of frustrating how it seems like everybody is like, we want something better, and the city can't do anything about it. It's so frustrating that we've waited a decade, and what we're getting isn't what we want, and now we have to accept the low ball. It's so frustrating. I think that Councilmember Nelson was right on the money with what I think should be happening here. I think more of it should be C5, because that's more like what the, that's more close to what the plan says, and it doesn't, it doesn't make sense that we have the plan that talks a big game, and then, oh, it turns out that like in this one page, we actually said that most of it's going to be C3 and not C5, and now we're just kind of stuck with that. I don't, I don't get that. I've said most of my stuff already, so you guys have read it.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Others in the chambers, come on up, please. And again, if you could identify yourself.
Good afternoon, City Mayor and councilmembers, Michael Rodriguez. So something that I would just like to share, I've been a resident of Bloomington for the last nine years, and I've been in South Town for quite a time, even more now that I work at Panda Express. So I have worked with Panda Express for the last three years. Something that I would like to add on is the, as they share the mayor crosswalk in front of Applebee's, as that, from 79 West, the northwest entrance, it's caused me an issue lately, more right now with the, that they demolished the buildings. I had, we have quite issues coming up from, obviously, the citizens of Bloomington and drivers by, just visitors of Minnesota, bringing up to our attention that we need to improve more our West 79 street entrance. We have a stop sign right now in front of Applebee's for people leaving South Town Shopping Center, but in, we also have a stop sign leaving, for example, Panda Express. But we do not have a stop sign going into the shopping center, which most of the time people take advantage of. I've been, I've seen it, I have witnessed drivers just getting to from Penn Avenue, flying by. And I think if there's something that we should do about it, like a stop sign, so then people can see and allow pedestrians cross from parking in front of Panda Express or like those retail stores that are over there to Applebee's or from in front of Applebee's to like going into Applebee's, because I've seen quite a long, a lot of incidents. And another thing also you just want to bring up, like, I want to obviously thank Kraus Anderson for always trying to improve our shopping center. That's one of the last ones that we have now, nowadays, everything online and stuff. So we still have, I would like to thank that, but just in consideration. And I would like to see more safety over there as we have kids wandering around too. That'll be all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Ms. Tolsmann, do we have anyone on the phone this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we have nobody online.
Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.5.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mu to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item 4.5. So counsel, questions, comments? What are we thinking on this? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think back to when this originally came back, when I was first getting on council, and I remember the contention that we had when we rezoned a number of the properties that were right there at South Town. And when I think about one of the goals that's a part of the plan and creating stakeholder value, both public and private, and there's a number of strategies, I'm not going to read them all off, but this idea of maintaining flexibility to respond to market cycles, I think is an important component, and the attorney for Kraus Anderson referred to that. And I think that, you know, we've kind of have to strike a balance. I mean, I'm not real crazy about, you know, seeing a big parking lot right in the middle of the future plan, but I'm just reminded of how far the city has come and that there is a cycle in which that we're kind of working our way through, and then eventually we'll kind of get to that end period of time. Certainly, what I think is proposed is far better than what we're seeing today. And while I'm not crazy about what I see right here before me now, I believe in the promise of what is to come in terms of partnering to get to this vision. It's not just a public property here, but it's also a private property, and there's a dialogue that's going on between these institutions. And I would like to be a part of that dialogue, and I think this begins that dialogue. So I know there's some folks that are concerned about maybe changing that zoning, but we've come a long ways in terms of that zoning, and, you know, maybe we need to take another look at that, but I just don't think this is the moment in time to have that conversation. If we want to crack this plan back open again at some point in time and have a further dialogue along with our private partners, maybe that's appropriate. But I think today, what we're looking at specifically, I think this meets the scope of what this plan was and is going to be currently.
Thank you, councilmember. Others? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks. I'd just like to echo my colleagues' comments. I think this meets what had been discussed previously. The FAR on the plan that is proposed that's going to be built is .55. It's above the .5 for that area, it's above the .4 that was compromised on previously. And I completely agree that this is not the time to have the conversation about rezoning that. I do think that's a conversation to have and/or some other standards or something like that, if we wanted to look at that. This is not the time right now. The plan that they have meets the requirements, it exceeds the requirements for what has been requested, and so I think I'm ready to move it forward, and I, you know, look forward to getting it under construction.
Counsel, other questions? Councilmember Delisandro?
Not a question, just a comment. Again, I don't think that there's anything that we can, I mean, I want to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, private property owners have rights that, you know, if this was my house and somebody was trying to come in and rezone my house without telling me, I would be mad about it, right? I mean, especially if it meant that I all of a sudden had a bunch of other requirements that I had to manage that I, like, don't, didn't even know were coming to me, right? So I think we have to be careful of that. I think, I think knowing that we are getting very close to what we are requiring for the C3 zone is good with me. I just, I guess I'm uninspired by this vision, unfortunately, that's a big problem, but that's my personal opinion, and it has nothing, it doesn't weigh in on whether or not this is something that as a council we should approve or not, right? I do appreciate that, that most retail establishments, when you hear, you know, whether that's, you know, a place like Simon Properties, you talk to people in the Mall of America, other places, people are looking to, you know, look at all the amazing stuff that happened at Southdale with all the experiences that are now available there. You can tell that retail is moving into this other perspective. So that Dick's wants to move here is awesome. I think, you know, getting in something that's more interactive, that'll let people to play and work with equipment and all that kind of stuff is pretty cool. It's more active, it's more interesting. Hopefully, people will walk from Penn American over there and get what they need and go golfing with it or whatever. You know, I, so that's cool. But, you know, then the medical office building, you're like, nobody's going to offices, like, I don't, I guess I'm confused, right? And so it feels a little uninspired, a little like lacking comprehension. Is that the right word? It's not comprehensive, it doesn't feel like it's a vision, it feels like opportunistic. And that's cool, like, that's doable. But you can have a vision, knowing that you have sewer problems, you don't have to sit around waiting for us to solve the sewer problems before you get a vision. And so I guess I'm just like, I would like to be really excited about this, and I just am not, which is sad because it's in my patch, and I want development to happen in my patch that's inspiring and interesting to people. So, anyway, other than that, I'm fine with it.
Counselmember Carter and Councilmember Revice, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess agree with what everybody has said. I mean, it is zoned C3, which is high-intensity retail, that's what it's going to be. And I, for one, I'm actually excited because I spend a lot of time driving over 494 to go to the Dick's, and so to have it in my backyard.
I go in there every day.
I was gonna say, and, you know, reading the description of what it is and how it's different from their current space, I mean, I think having that more experiential opportunity is good. And so, you know, I think that if former councils had wanted to see something drastically different than when the zoning was changed at that time, it should have been changed to what the vision was. It wasn't, it was changed to C3 from C1. And so it's going to be high-intensity retail. And because I do live close to this area and spend a lot of time here, I will say I'm very excited for the improvements overall.
Counselmember Revice?
I just have an idea. Why don't we move all the weed manufacturing from Lindell to that area? Right? I mean, that would make sense, right? No, it's high-intensity commerce in there, so that's what I would suggest. Rather than that, I agree with the rest of the council. I mean, we should go ahead with this and just pass it. I mean, it's a commercial place, it's always been, I think it was the first mall that ever was ever created or built, right?
Southdale, I believe. That town.
Southdale, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but anyway, so I agree with the fact that we should just move along and to pass it. But please, take my suggestion. Move all the weed production to...
Just don't worry in your territory.
Counsel, if there are no other questions or comments on this, I would look for action on item 4.5.
Happy to move this, Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Delisandro?
I move to approve preliminary and final development plans for a partial redevelopment of the South Town Shopping Center, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the preliminary and final development plans for a partial redevelopment of the South Town Shopping Center. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Delisandro?
I move to approve preliminary plat to subdivide 7803 Penn Avenue into four lots for future redevelopment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the preliminary plat to subdivide 7803 Penn Avenue into four lots for future redevelopment. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Delisandro?
And finally, I move to adopt a resolution approving plotting variance, allowing park dedication fees to be paid at the time of building permit issuance.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the resolution approving a plotting variance regarding park dedication fees. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you for the conversation on this. Thank you all. Staff, thanks for your work on this. Again, I know this is not a small one to take on, so I appreciate your work on this. Counsel, we are at 9:35, and we're heading into our organizational business, and we've got a couple of items here, but I think we're on track. So again, keep our statements and our questions succinct and on topic, and we should be okay here. Item 5.1, our appointment updates for the 35W Solutions Alliance and this 169 Corridor Coalition. I think we had, with the staff turnover, we've got a couple of vacancies there, and I don't know that we need a presentation of any kind. This is a, this is an appointment to those, to those groups, and based on what staff has recommended and based on the folks that we have, the expertise that we have available on this, I would make the motion that we appoint Julie Long as the staff representative to the 35W Solutions Alliance for a term set to expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Delisandro to appoint Julie Long to the 35W Solutions Alliance. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, with Councilmember Carter having stepped away for a moment here. And I would also make a motion to appoint Julie Long as the staff alternate to the US 169 Corridor Coalition for a term set to expire on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Delisandro to appoint Julie Long as the alternate to the 169 Corridor Coalition. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And we'll move on to item 5.2, the first of our 2025 in-depth budget discussions. And we are going to start with the Fire Department with Chief Seal, and then we will transition to our strategic priorities fund, and Deputy Finance Officer Cory Carlson will lead us through that. But as I said, we will start with Chief Seal, and Deputy Chief Forrester is going to join in if, when, if he needs to, so.
When he starts to see me fall.
When he starts to see you stagger, so. Chief Seal, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We're here to discuss the 2025 Fire Department budget, and review some comparisons with 2024, our staffing requests, new initiatives, potential revenue enhancements, or at least review some of the revenue efforts we've made to date, evaluating the impact of potential service reductions. So what we're going to start with is look at the history, kind of the history of the Fire Department and move into the future. I guess I got to change this, don't I? How about that? So, Fire Department evolution, as most of you know, a Fire Department was created or put together in 1947 with just 26 volunteers, one little two-stall station over in the corner of 95th and Garfield. Obviously, that's changed as the city has changed tremendously, and as the city continues to change, we continue to face challenges. So in 2001, we introduced some daytime duty crews using our part-time people because we were struggling getting rigs out during the day. We introduced some 24-hour duty crews in two stations in 2021, and the reason we did that was to take care of the fact that we were closing one station and rebuilding it, and we had to cover that area as well as the area that we started our duty crew program with, which was up at Station 6, Station 6's area. So we... Six, Station Six's area. So, we slowly transitioned, kind of slowly. It's been more rapid in the last few years, but we began a slow transition of acquiring full-time, full-time staff, starting actually with, I, I had some full-time administrative staff, but starting with full-time staff was the fire chief's position, and that occurred in 2007, and we started adding more full-time staff slowly after that. We really started running into problems recruiting paid-on-call firefighters, and I've talked to you about this before. Some of our last paid-on-call or part-time firefighter recruitment efforts, we had a lot of interest, but few that would get through the process and stick with the program. So, with some of that, we, knowing that, we, at the council's request, and my recommendation, we decided to engage a company to come in and do an assessment of our services and our service capabilities. So, they identified some significant response time issues, and while the, the slide says we started 24-hour duty crews in all stations, it really wasn't in all stations. It was 24-hour duty crews in some of our stations, and as that has progressed, with our number of part-time or paid-on-call people, as well as the full-time people we've, we've acquired, we right now are staffing four stations pretty much all the time. Not quite all the time, but pretty much all the time, and five stations some of the time. So, we have one station right now that we do not staff pretty much anytime. That's one of the next ones up to be rebuilt, and that's Fire Station Two. But we are making an effort, pretty decent effort right now, to staff crews in, in four or five-hour stations most of the time. So, that 2020 service assessment did identify some significant response time issues, and recognize response time goal for a department our size protecting the population density, and with our city risk profile. And they really identified seven minutes and 30 seconds total response time. Ninety percent of the time is our goal. You guys are aware of that. We've talked about that. With an effective response force, number of personnel on apparatus, in 2021, we met that seven-minute and 30-second standard 60% of the time. Yeah, this is, this is not quite to that slide yet. I'm giving you facts that aren't on the slide. No, you're good. That's good. I, I do not mind people moving me along here. The, the, the 2024 actual 90th percentile is 934, which actually is an improvement from 1130 that we had previous. So, it's improvement of two minutes, but we're still two minutes plus away from our seven-minute and 30-second goal. So, and we've also got a goal for response to structure fires, and getting at least 15 personnel onto a scene of a structure fire. And that was, that eight-minute travel time for those 15 personnel, so it was 11-minute, 30-second response time for a multi-unit response to a structure fire. And we did that 9% of the time in 2021. And this year, for the 19 structure fires we've had so far this year, we haven't been able to do that once. So, there's still a struggle, that's the point of this, and we're still growing out of the problem that we, that we have. So, the next slide. So, post-COVID, our difficulties in recruiting and retaining capable part-time people kind of reached critical mass. We applied for a SAFER grant in 2021, and we didn't get it. We reapplied again in 2022 with some help from an actual grant writer, and we were successfully awarded a grant for 18 firefighters. And so currently, our, our firefighting strength is 30 firefighters, full-time firefighters on shift, and we've currently got 76 active, part-time firefighters. But to give you a sense of, of how difficult it is to fill spots with part-time people, those 76 part-time firefighters basically staff four positions every day all year round, just four positions. So, our goal is to staff six stations with six engines at six stations with four personnel 24 hours a day. And that'll take approximately 80 full-time and 75 part-time firefighters assigned to operations and response, so, assigned to our, our, our working shifts positions. In addition, we've got fire, fire prevention, which entails code enforcement inspections, plan review for fire code compliance, fire education. And out of fire education comes our school program, seniors' education, and public outreach and training. And as the city continues to grow and density continues to increase, we anticipate in the future needing to add a couple more positions into fire inspections to keep up on our code enforcement. By the way, if you've got questions, you don't have to wait to the end. I know the boss likes you to wait to the end, but the, the original request for 2025, I'm not keeping up with my slides. So, our request for 2025 was two additional fire, assistant fire chief positions, promote three more fire captains, and an increase in estimated overtime costs. I will tell you that out of this slide came six additional firefighting positions, but I'll talk about that just in a minute, because as you, most, most of you know, we, we were successful in another SAFER grant application. So, the two additional assistant fire chief positions, one currently is in operations, and we'll add one for EMS and one for training, promote three more fire captains, and that will effectively give us supervision on one more fire engine that we have right now. We have three fire engines with career captains on it, and we'll add another one. So, four of our engines will have crew supervision. And that, those promotions just promote from within the firefighter ranks. It doesn't add more firefighters. It's using existing firefighters we had and promoting them. And that estimated overtime cost, as we gain more experience with career operation, we're getting a better handle on some of our, our costs with that. This, if you look at it, is the budget request, and it's just under, the net increase is just under $2.1 million. Most of that is, so give me the next slide, that buck breakdown of changes. So, increase in salary and benefits, and for existing current staff is about $630,000. Projected overtime costs, I mentioned that already, that's $140,000. Additional two assistant chiefs positions was $223,000. Promoting the three firefighters, 42. New equipment, that got added back in after we took the cost of the six firefighters out. If you remember that, we had that discussion prior too. So, that's the new equipment for the new SAFER firefighters that we got coming. Internal charges, some increases for internal charges, internal services, some increases in professional and medical contract, contractual services. And then, we lose ARP funding for the three battalion chiefs that we made, and we're paying with ARP dollars. And as you can see, it's just under $2.1 million total cost. Staffing requests. So, future requests, we want to continue adding firefighters. Like I said, we got, or awarded, much to my surprise, another SAFER grant for another 18 firefighters. So, some of those annual additions to our staffing are going to be consolidated, I guess is the best way to put it. So, we don't have six additional, plus the SAFER grant in '25, and I would anticipate that same in '26, that we would not add in '26, because in 2026, as you recall, the 18 firefighters that we first hired with our SAFER grant are coming off the SAFER grant in '26, about a quarter of the way through the year.
So, Mayor, this is where I've got my question.
Counselmember Lomond, go ahead.
So, so we say continue adding firefighters, and I like how you laid that out, Chief. What I'm curious about is, you know, each year till what year will we reach our goal? And I know that, that's a, you know, a moving target based on, you know, retirements and other, other types of things. But in your mind, if you had to, you know, pick a date when we'd get to that, 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 that number, 80, or whatever the, the total number we're looking at, when would that be?
So, if, not if, but as we add these new 18, that'll get us to 48. Simple math gives you 32 more to get to 80. And if we add six a year, that's five more years.
Of course, we're going to skip a couple of years because of the...
Yes, so...
...SAFER grant kind of coming out that, so.
Right.
Maybe, maybe seven years out, or?
Well, if you're talking about from today, yes, seven years out. Five years from, from 2028, which would get you to 30, 32, 30, 33. Or, excuse me, 20, 2030. That's a bit of a stretch, but 20, 2032.
Wow, who's sounding like me trying to tell my math to my wife, the finance person?
So, those, those, I, I want to be cautious about this, though, because to me, a plan is not something that gets carved into stone. There are a lot of things that can change in five years. There's a lot of things that can change in seven years, and I just want you to be aware of that, both positive and negative, that could affect that staffing plan. Currently, what we're looking forward to is being able to staff five units pretty much all the time with the addition of these 18, because that's really adding six firefighters a shift. And continue to work towards that 80, so we can staff all six.
And then secondarily, with that, that risk of waiting out those seven years, basically, are there risks associated with that, you know, from a, you know, from a, from a fire standpoint, or, you know, from a, you know, I know you're going to show us some slides later on, but...
We, we are doing better right now than we were when we started this process, because of our problems with response. Our response is much, our response time has improved considerably. Where we're not as good as we were in farther back history is getting enough people on the fire ground at once. But that's just a function of available people and what people can give us. So, the only way to speed this up is to add more people more quickly, and that has a significant budget impact. I think that was one of the reasons that council gave me direction to apply for another SAFER grant, is so we can kind of make that leap again, and add another 18. And that's, that's where we're at right now. I know what the tax levy discussions have been about for both '25 and '26. So, that's why I think it's, makes a lot of sense, since we were talking about adding six a year, to be certainly delaying those times for '25 and '26, since we're adding 18 in one shot that would be starting in '25. We're fortunate in that their salary and benefits are going to be covered by the grant for three years, just like this last one was. And that's all their salary and benefits, so. So, with that in mind, you know, without being able to predict the future clearly, we're, we got a huge leap on this. We're got a huge jump on this. I mean, truth, truthfully, we've gone from seven command staff to 48 firefighters in three years, so.
Counselmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, just a quick question. I, I think I'm recalling correctly that when we first started talking about this move, we said 75 full-time firefighters and 60 paid-on-call firefighters, and now I understand we're saying 80 full-time firefighters and 75 paid-on-call firefighters. What's the, why, why are we, why are we adding five and 15 respectively?
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Counselmember Delisandro, as I had stated previously, when that first plan was put forth, it was put forth because council was really interested in some final numbers. When I did put that plan forth, I was pretty, I tried to be pretty clear in that this is, you know, initial, as we gain more experience, things will change. We're gaining more experience, things are changing. And I don't necessarily want to discourage you from the potential that things may change more yet.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of variables here. One of the variables is obviously if our, our ability to hire more part-time people. Another variable is our ability to hire full-time people. They are hiring a lot of firefighters around the metro area in the next six months. There's like 56 positions being hired between me and two other departments. So, we need to be aware of that fact, and how, how all this is going to affect the process. So, I am doing my best. My plan is to give you something a little more definitive, but plans are, to me, something that should be, you should be able to pull the plan out and pencil whip it, because nothing's going to stay the same.
Okay. Thanks.
Talk about enhanced service deliveries a little bit. In 2023, we started a paramedic engine program, and the effort was to have a paramedic firefighter on each engine to provide enhanced medical interventions, and those much more quickly. And it was in response to some of the difficulty that our ALS partners and ALS providers were having with getting ambulances to us in a timely manner. And that program, I, I'm very happy to say, has been working very, very well. We've been able to get paramedics on each of our engines most of the time, and providing those enhanced interventions to people in medical need much more quickly. And that includes both pharmaceutical or, and mechanical interventions. So, more advanced airways, being able to get drugs on board to assist people that are either in pain or in cardiac arrest. And it also comports with a change in how EMS is being provided in a lot of places of the country, and the number of people that they are realizing that it takes to provide adequate care to somebody that's in critical, in critical care, critical care situation. Our training and operational programs to meet current, our current challenges, our fire environment changes, you've heard me talk about our fire environment before, based upon how things are built and what they're constructed of. We get much more rapid heat release rates, much more rapid fire growth. It makes it much more difficult for aspects of our population to get out of a, a building that even has smoke detectors in it. And those two groups are the elderly and children. So, that response time that was identified as being very critical by our, our fire service assessment is still very critical to our ability to provide services. Their built environment, as you well know, the densification, the changes in our constructed environment, and they want to continue to make changes. Some ideas that I'm not very fond of, like creating these four- and five-story buildings with just one stairwell, and, and other things that you will undoubtedly see in your development process sometime in the future, that will either have me or, or some of my compatriots fidgeting, because they're not really good ideas in our minds, but I recognize that we don't always hold sway. The other thing is in our, our rescue environment, so we've talked about fire environment, built environment, medical, the medical, and our rescue environment in this city has both urban and rural rescue challenges. So, we have to train for both. We have to train for the urban rescue challenges, as well as the, the rural or more wildland rescue challenges because of our, our tremendous park system. So, not, I'm not complaining about that. It's just a fact of life. Potential revenue enhancements, I, I can't foresee the future very well as far as revenue in the fire service, because typically, we have not been great revenue generators. But the things I want to point to is our efforts we've made, both with our SAFER grants, but also our AFG grants, and we've got those exhaust systems put into our fire stations using AFG grants, hired 48 firefighters, or we'll, we'll have hired 48 firefighters using SAFER grant dollars. We also get training funds from the Minnesota Board of Fire Training and Education, and our, we very closely track our training costs through the year. And while they will give us an initial distribution based upon our per firefighter amount, if not, if all the fire departments in the state don't utilize their dollars, they redistribute leftover dollars to us. redistribute leftover dollars to us. And because we turn in all our costs, we were able to get another seventy-seven thousand dollars in the second half of this year of distribution from that. So we're constantly looking for the money that is available and making sure that we we got a toe in the door. Then the two percent state fire aid for pension contribution, that helps reduce the city contribution to the to the part-time pension fund, and that's a mandated pass-through. And this year, it's a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I believe.
Councilmember Mua, question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief, back to the safer grant awards. Do you know, do we have a limit on how many times we can apply? I'm wondering if we could do a third swing, like really just get to the finish line.
There is no limit. I I've already expended all the goodwill I have with my neighboring fire chiefs by getting two in a row. But we could but we could certainly apply for another one. We more than happy apply for another one. This grant writer we use has been very good. So he got us our AFG grants, he also got us both safer grants. So we can certainly do that if the council so directs.
Which I would be completely supportive of. I think I would love to get there faster rather than later. And so whatever we can do to get additional funding to help that, I would love to have that support.
Okay. We do get some permit fees from our our fire prevention division, fire martial operational license, some permit revenue, fire plan checking, sprinkler fire alarm permits. And you can see that's not a lot of money. It's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year that we get out of that. So our we talk about reduction of service, reduction impacts. I think we're we've we're trying to crawl out of a service reduction that was based upon staffing issues, not based upon monetary issues at the time. So our mission tucks right in with the city mission, and and ours is profession preservation and protection of life, property, and the environment. And 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 the city's overall mission is to cultivate cultivating and enduring a remarkable community where people want to be, and they dovetail right together, right? Safe environment and a remarkable remarkable community are both coexisting. So you we can look at impact of service reductions. Some of this we're crawling out of now. We've had we're getting out of those slower emergency response. The population, as the population continues to grow, more and more people in the city, more people call nine-one-one. And nine-one-one is one of those places where you don't call to make an appointment, you call to get service right away. So we have to be ready twenty-four hours a day. Higher insurance costs, that's a possibility. And I have already talked to you about our ISO review. We've got the results back from the ISO review, but we've got some dickering back and forth with ISO right now, because they've made some changes that we don't understand. They increased our road miles by a hundred percent. We went from three hundred and ninety road miles to seven hundred and ninety road miles, and we don't understand where they got that number. And at the same time, they listed our population as eighty thousand. So I've got some quibbles with ISO, which is not new for anybody that knows me, but we'll work through those before we I come back to you with a final on that. So the limited fire prevention efforts with, you know, without adequate coverage, that becomes more and more of an issue as well, the more people you have in the city. I'm gonna got behind a there we go, we'll catch back up. So one of the things I really wanted to talk about, and because one of the things I also that went by in the slide program that you might not have seen or didn't register, I know Councilmember De La Sandro caught caught the the difference in the count, but it's also my my firm belief that we need to staff four people on each of those engines. Right now, I'm building just to three, trying to staff three people on those engines, but I'm really concerned about equity of coverage and equity of service to all of our citizens and community, and that's why six stations are important. And the quicker I can get those six stations open and operating, the better. So we're electing to staff those engines with three and open have more stations open. I could staff less stations and have them open with four, but I I think it's the equity of coverage is really important. But ultimately, we want to get four on each of those six engines. And you guys have seen some of this before, where we've got a fairly well-involved structure fire with one firefighter stretching a hose line or two firefighters on a hose line and having a near miss. Another well-involved structure fire where we get two firefighters. And this one was was one where that first-in engine actually came from a ways away, because we, at that time, we only had three stations staffed, we did not have four stations staffed. Currently, we're staff staffing one, station one, station three, station four, and station five, almost all the time. When we can, we staff station six. We used to staff station six, we moved it down to five, because our our number of calls in that area were much greater than the calls up up by station six. But we still have calls up by fire station six, and we're we're covering those with four and five right now, just like we're covering station two's area calls with station one and station four and station five. So this happened to be a call in station five's area, where engine four was the first engine in, and they were also one of those crews that stretched a hand line with a two-person crew to a fairly well-involved structure fire. And the other point to this slide is response time is important, because you can see where we really have fire involving the roof and one garage, really one garage stall. And while we're waiting for the engine to show up, it extends to fully involve both garage stalls and starts extending into the house. So a rapid response for fires as well as medical emergencies is really important. And the last one, you know, Councilmember Loman, you remember this one, a hundred and twelve block of Union, Ewing, once again, a well-involved structure fire with with a two-person crew. So I'm a firm believer that we want to get to that four-person crew for not only our fires, but also our EMS. We're really working hard on something we call pit crew EMS, where we, for lack of a better analogy, treat our patient with a pit crew, where each person has a specific responsibility to take care of that patient. One will take care of the airway, another takes care of circulation, third be starting an IV or getting a line, fourth, you know, so we we're we're really working with that in mind. And so our critical care calls now, even though we send a three-person engine, we'll also send a chief, so we can work that patient with at least four people. And I'm open for questions or discussion.
Thank you for the presentation and the information, Chief. Appreciate it. The question that came to mind for me, so we you've talked the cost of personnel, obviously, and and that's what we're we're focusing on. But what what's the delta of the new fire stations? You know, what is what is the cost of operating a fire station twenty-four seven, like you need to and and housing firefighters and and not not the not the construction cost, but the the operational cost of those of those new fire stations?
So to staff one unit twenty-four seven, it takes probably close to twelve firefighters, eleven or twelve firefighters, twenty-four seven. With three, if you're gonna staff it with four, it's gonna gonna take sixteen firefighters.
I I wasn't making myself clear, obviously. I'm I'm not talking about the personnel in there, I'm talking the building itself. To to turn the lights on, to run the water, to keep it clean, to to heat and cool it, the those full-time facilities as opposed to the the fire barns, I mean, there's there's gotta be a huge difference in cost in running one of those things.
I'd have to check on that. I can get that number for you, because I know we we've started tracking it. There are some efficiencies we got with the new constructions and some improvements we got in operational efficiency with the new construction that we didn't have with the old. So while I think our costs will increase, they won't increase probably as much as we think. A lot of the increase is gonna be due to the increased square footage that we've added when we built those places. But just the fact that having people there and the space and everything else, once the construction costs are done, keeping the buildings running with the lights on and everything else, probably is not a greater increase as you'd think. But let me get those numbers for you and and I'll bring them back.
Thank you, and and I appreciate that, just because it's it's the one thing that we don't we we talked about the cost of building those things, we talked about the new personnel, but just the how much to operate the
Sure.
themselves, so and considering we're doing the number that we're doing, something worth thinking about.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be pretty frank, I have no interest in reducing the firefighter budget or anything to that matter. I have been a full supporter of a fire fire department since I started living in Bloomington. And I watched my childhood home burn down when I was an adult. I went home, my parents called and said, the house is on fire. I'm an hour and a half away, by the time I got home, our house was burned down. And I'll tell you, there is not one second that I thought, oh, how much does this cost for the firefighters to be here? I was just happy they were there. I were happy we saved some mementos from our house. I'm happy that my parents were alive. And then the summer, watching the the Xerxes house catch on fire a block and a half away from my house, just reaffirmed to me that we need to continue to support our fire department, get fully staffed so that we don't have people's homes burning down because of that response time, so that our firefighters can get there, because station two's a block and a half away. Station two is staffed, but they would have been there in a minute and a half, that fire would have been tiny, we wouldn't have the same damage that we do right now. And I've watched them take five months to finally put a new roof on that house. And so I have no interest in in move removing anything from the budget. I appreciate you, Chief, for offering, but I want to see us get up and running as fast as we can to make sure that we can keep the residents of Bloomington safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor, Councilmembers. I do want to say this, I truly appreciate the support the council has given us. They gave us the support to to apply for the first safer grant. They've funded the the fire service assessment, they looked at that assessment and took it to heart, and now the second safer grant application. I'll be completely blunt, there are some of my colleagues out there where their councils won't let them apply for a safer grant. They won't let them seek out some of these revenue opportunities, because they're worried about picking up the tail at the end. I I I truly appreciate all the effort and the support you guys have given the fire department, and it's it's been it's gotten us to where we are today.
Well, well said, Councilmember. Council, if there are other questions or comments, quick ones, because I'm keeping an eye on the clock here, and we still have one more presentation here about the Strategic Priorities Fund. So quick one, Councilmember Nelson?
Just a quick one. Please don't take this the wrong way, because I do support the fire department. It's gonna be very quick. So this this question came out of a conversation I had regarding the Burnsville Fire Department, and Burnsville is about two-thirds of the landmass of Bloomington, it's about two-thirds of the population, and it has two fire stations. And there is a cost for each fire station, and so there are differences with us, because we have, you know, Normandale Towers, we have Mall of America, we have Highland, which makes you have to drive around. So I tried to explain that to the individual that was there, but it could you address that, like, you know, why do why does Bloomington have six when Burnsville has two and has response times in the neighborhood of about six minutes? They're they're fully staffed, you know, and I believe in theirs, which is where we're getting to, so that helps with their response times. But I I think the concern that was raised was, are we taking the number of stations we needed when we weren't staffed and using that same number now that we are staffed?
Okay, so I'll try to answer that really quick question. Quickly. Give you a couple of demographic differences between us and Burnsville. Landmass is one, population is another. And really, if you look at the development we have in this city, it's considerably different than Burnsville. We probably have sixty high-rise buildings. And besides the Mall of America, we've also got some pretty intense industrial commercial development in the city, as well as some very high-density multifamily housing. So I think those are some critical differences. I will tell you that fire station location done by the 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 people who do that all over the country are done based upon response times. We had about an eight-minute time lag in our response time just getting a truck out the door when we weren't staffing stations, because it took at least four or five minutes to get down, the firefighters to get to the station, get this truck truck staffed, and then get it out the door. So we were having quite a time difference just getting there. So yes, our response time has improved. Can you do it with less? That's the thing about fire service. You can set the level of fire service you want into your community to anything you want. I will tell you that Burnsville has reached that point where they're starting to break, and they put in for a safer grant this year. They are moving to hire more people this year, even without the safer grant, much like Minnetonka and Eden Prairie both put in for safer grants, and they are also adding career people because of this issue about being able to provide service. So I think response time, and there's a statistic that was in the presentation that I I passed over rather quickly, is also affected by how many calls you have. Currently, right now, about sixty percent of the time we have a call in 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 process, we have more than one call in process. We have two or three calls happening at the same time. So when you staff four rigs in the city and you have three calls happening at the same time, you know what what's going on. There is also a percentage of the time that we have four or five calls going on at the same time. So I would also say that our 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 call load is gonna be very close to or equal to Burnsville's, and they're running an ALS service. Is that pretty fair? Yeah, yeah, that's what the standard of cover study was really based on, was that response time and road miles to provide good service, equitable service, you know? And it's like like Councilmember Mua mentioned, I have a station shut down, and that's where I have my problem, and it makes makes everybody look bad, so.
Thank you for the detailed response, I appreciate it. I was not trying to put you on the spot
No, no, I'm fine.
Or say that I was wrong, I just it was a question that had come up and and, you know, just always trying to look and make sure we provide the service efficiently and cost effectively. And so I I support adding the people. So if I can ask one last question, if I understand the numbers correctly, it's about two million dollars a year that we get for the safer grant for eighteen firefighters, and you need thirty-two more? So we just need just shy of four million? That's all we need to come up with a year?
They gave us six point nine million for the eighteen firefighters for three years.
Okay, so two point something.
Two point two.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to do it like like others have said, I mean, if if we looked at accelerating that, we're we're looking at somewhere four and a half, five million a year added to the budget to just say, hey, you know what, Chief, just go do it. So I didn't say, Chief, just go do it.
Councilmember Loman, a ten-second question, that's all you get.
No, not even a question, just a comment, I think
You got a five-second comment.
I'll jump jump off of what what Sean said, I I'd be for trying to to make that that effort, just because I just get so concerned about the fires I've seen here in the city of Bloomington.
Chief, thank you much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Our second part of item five point two is the Strategic Priorities Fund. Kari Carlson, thanks for sticking it out with us tonight. And I hope we've given you enough time here.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Yes, I will be discussing the Strategic Priorities Fund. So I'll just start with an overview of what that fund is quickly, followed by a review of fund balance, twenty twenty-four revenues, and then twenty twenty-four approved and planned transfers. And I'll also discuss potential transfers for twenty-five and conclude with the long-term financial model. So just just to start off, as a refresher, so the Strategic Priorities Fund is a designated financial resource aimed at supporting initiatives that align with the city's long-term goals and provides financial flexibility to the city. And it typically receives revenues from either property tax levy directly or positive budget variance from the general fund. And this fund allows the city council to focus on projects that address the city's top priorities. So it sometimes acts as seed money for key initiatives. So it helps to launch projects, um, for example, within the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan. So at the beginning of the year, the Strategic Priorities Fund had a balance of just over eight point three million dollars. And we're projecting that by by the end of um this year, twenty-four, that that balance will be approximately five point seven million dollars. So just looking at the twenty twenty-four revenues, the primary sources included a one point one million dollar transfer from positive budget variance from the general fund. That was the majority of it. Um, also, we did, um, we don't usually get local government aid. We got a little bit this year, so it's uh fifty-six thousand dollars of local government aid from the state. And then uh projecting around seventy-five thousand dollars in interest. So here is a recap with all of the council approval dates um for so far in twenty twenty-four. What the council has approved as far as transfers coming out of the Strategic Priorities Fund. So the total is three point five million. Um, I won't go through all of that list there, but uh these transfers, they support a wide range of initiatives, as you can see, um such as the Climate Change Equity Mitigation and Resiliency Plan, Public Health Food Access Plan, and the Dred Scott Field Improvements are some of those on that list. Um, there are additional details with all of these um that um these approved projects that were included in the agenda materials for this evening. So we are planning to bring a few more transfer requests to the council uh next month, so in October. And these include a Neighborhood Engagement Initiative, which we'd um talked a little bit about before, also Boards and Commission Improvements and two park maintenance pieces of equipment. So to expand a bit more on those proposed transfers that are still planned um to come to council for your consideration on this year, the goal of the Neighborhood Engagement Initiative is to build stronger neighborhood connections that enhance community well-being and strengthens leadership and a sense of place. This initiative emphasizes community-driven programs rather than formal neighborhood associations. And the eighty-seven thousand dollar transfer from the Strategic Priorities Fund would cover public participation costs like communication, advertisements, interpretation services, and facilitators. And then a little more on the Boards and Commission Process Improvements. We're looking at improving the recruitment and onboarding processes for the eleven advisory boards and commissions with a transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from the Strategic Priorities Fund. And this would support creation of recruitment and onboarding videos and leadership training. Another proposed investment uh from Strategic Priorities would be a self-propelled boom lift with a trailer for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which would enable park maintenance to efficiently access hard-to-reach areas for tree trimming and minimal um with minimal environmental impact. Currently, they lack the equipment to do this type of work. And acquiring this boom lift would allow them to perform proactive maintenance um regularly and ensure operations um safer operations in difficult areas. And then the last one on the list for this year was um proposing a fifty-five thousand dollar transfer for purchase of a mini excavator. Currently, park maintenance rents this equipment uh five to ten times a year for irrigation repairs. And by owning the equipment, can perform quicker, more efficient repairs and reduce uh downtime and improve gameplay on fields. So looking ahead to twenty twenty-five, uh, we have identified potential transfers totaling five point seven million dollars. Two of the larger transfers proposed on this list include three point two million dollars there at the bottom for real estate acquisitions related to the new Community Health and Wellness Center site. This amount would be reimbursed back to the Strategic Priorities Fund once the bonds are issued. Um, but then potentially repaid through debt service from this fund over time. And then also, uh, twenty twenty-five is the last year that we had modeled out um a one point one million dollars to the general fund for tax levy stabilization. Um, and but this was planned uh just this last year in twenty-five to continue that, and that began with a twenty twenty-one budget. And then uh finally, the final slide I have, uh, these are screenshots. There's a lot of numbers on here. We tried to condense it into two different shots from the Long-Term Model Report um of the Strategic Priorities Fund. But in twenty twenty-five, um, based on that last slide of potential um transfers out, the fund balance could potentially decrease to just um down to about five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars for an ending fund balance. But then would come back up um without money coming back into Strategic Priorities after the bonds were issued if if that was um used for acquiring property. So it would come back to about three point four million in twenty twenty-six and then potentially two point four million in two thousand twenty-eight. The items that are in black on this um slide, at least for the the left half of the slide with those different activities going in and out, um, those are things that have actually happened, have been approved, and the ones that are italicized in blue or purple are um just potential things that are have been modeled out. So that concludes my presentation. So look forward to your questions, uh, feedback, guidance for the Strategic Priorities Fund.
Thank you very much. Council questions? This has been, this has come up in the past, and I think there we've heard at least a few of the questions or a few of the issues that have been brought up here. Uh, were questioned or or issues brought up about them. So anything specific we need to talk about? Councilmember Mua and then Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Mua.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, do we know what the break even is for the excavator and the boom lift compared to like if we keep renting or versus buying? Like, how long is it gonna take for us to be like? This is justified for us to buy it versus keep renting?
Yes, um, Mayor, uh, councilmembers, Councilmember Mua, I, we can get that information. There would be a a point where um depending on the how many times a year that we're using that and the cost of it, that I think it it would break even pretty quickly.
Okay. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Mua, not sure if they have that specific detail available, but uh Dave Hansen and uh Allison Wern are both available, so we could bring them into the conversation, ask him the question.
And then my second kind of comment question has always been just the the fund balance. It always feels really high to me. And I'm wondering like if we can automatically put in maybe a percentage, like we always take this percentage and we put it towards the tax levy to reduce the amount of burden that we put on residents, because a- all of this is just property tax money anyways. And so in looking at the the proposed projects and expenditures, right? The three point two million is an outlier. Most of the time, the projects that staff are bringing and requesting from us are in a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, four hundred thousand dollars max. So why do we have to carry such a big fund balance if we're never gonna really be pulling or needing that that big of a pot of money? Um, so I would, if we if we can, like, we just say three million is our budget, everything over that goes towards the tax levy. Um, would be something I'd be interested in or learning more about how we can better do that.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Mua, that's a nice recap of conversations that this body has had over the last several uh years about the fund itself. Uh, one thing uh that's important to point out about the tax levy stabilization line item and whether we would continue to use uh this fund as a sort, as a source for tax levy stabilization. Um, is that uh that is um a decision that went back about three years ago when we went through the Community Budget Advisory Committee. And the direction from the council was that um uh we wanted to minimize impact to taxpayers to the greatest extent possible very during a very difficult economic time. And so that one point one million uh was put in there. Uh, and and it was intended to be an interim solution for about three years. But that's what we would refer to as a structural imbalance in our um sources and uses, right, is that uh, the the tax levy stabilization uh was intended to be a temporary thing. So if we were to continue to utilize the fund going forward, we would continue to perpetuate the structural imbalance. So as Kari showed in her long-term model, we have uh the tax levy stabilization actually um being utilized for twenty twenty-five, and that's the last year that we're forecasting using it. Now, that has an impact on the tax levy when council is going to come around next year during the um budget deliberations is you know, that represents a little bit more than a a point of tax levy increase. But that's that's the sort of the legacy or the consequence of having an unbalanced approach over several years. So what we're trying to do is defer some of that impact and, you know, forecasting when that that income, that impact has to be re-experienced. Uh, to the rest of your points, I would say um you're you're correct is that as as uh Kari summarized, we have uh largely used this fund uh for one-time opportunities. I know that Councilmember Nelson has uh frequently asked uh why we wouldn't include some of the items on our Strategic Priorities Fund list uh as as part of the operating budget. Um, and we have specifically tried to identify things that are one-time items uh so that we don't have um a little bit of, you know, fluctuation in those operating budgets. We try to maintain those uh you know, to be stable as much as we can. So this gives us a way to do that. And also, as you know, essentially, the the startup fund uh for something that's potentially going to get worked into our budget, like the therapist program, right? We know we're gonna have an ongoing commitment to the therapist program, so we have some things on the front end of developing those um and then incorporate them at a later time. So appreciate the way that Kari has laid this out. Councilmember Mua, your question is a a good one because council has asked that for a long time. What do we, what are we reserving this fund? And I think the idea has been, there's there's gonna be a big something there. Um, just what is that? Now, one of the possibilities is exactly what um has been identified here is uh some of the potential property acquisition uh that is going to be uh com- complimentary for the community center project and whether uh that is the the right approach.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, now the city manager already said my part, so he's preempting me. He wants to get out tonight.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson has uh correctly summarized the situation.
Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Loman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so as a as a compliment to the comments of of Councilmember Mua, my biggest challenge with this fund is that we don't have clear definition for what we want it to be used for. So I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of saying we should, you know, not have a balance of X or Y because we don't necessarily plan we don't plan um strategically for using the dollars in the first place. So if we had three million dollars every year and we sat as a council, and we actually talked about what we wanted to do with that three million dollars every year, I would be fine with it being three million dollars a year and everything else goes back to the levy. Like, I don't have an issue with that. But we don't do that as a council. And so I don't know why we don't do that, but it feels to me like what we've done with it so far, at least in my limited experience, has been one of two things. Either we put something on a work plan that we didn't anticipate at the beginning of the year, and we said, we'll fund it for you because we didn't ask you to do it in advance. So you didn't plan for it. We care about it a lot, and so we're gonna help you fund it. So that makes sense to me, right? That's the council's discretion to say, stop what you're doing and do this instead, and here's the money for it. Okay. The other thing we seem to use it for is um uh when we um have an have an uh uh something that's in the strategic plan, like a five-year plan, and they're they're getting around to it in the work plan, and so it needs to be accommodated now in the operating budget, and we don't, we have a gap there, and so we fill that gap. So as an example of that would be, you know, when we did um the when we did the Natural Resources Management Program, right, that was in the strategic plan. But as we actually moved the office into Parks and Rec and got Dave involved in that at the leadership and everything, we started funding that. And then we said, oh, we need forestry. We started funding that, et cetera, et cetera. So so like, those things all make sense to me. I just would like to have a more proactive and more concerted conversation as a council about what we agree to are those priorities. And we don't spend it on other things. And then we can plan to give some money back to the levy. And I I see the stabilization fund a little bit differently. I think I I don't I don't think of it as as sta- uh destabilizing in the same way that maybe the um city manager does. Um, I I think of it as um we, it is the way that we control when we make a budget in year, the year, and then as the year goes by, if we do better in that year on our revenues, we have this money and we can choose to give a portion of that back to the ca- the taxpayer. Like, that's the way I see it. Like, that's maybe not correct, but I, that's the way I see it. And we keep, we can do that, and we can do that with all of the money or none of the money or some of the money, right? And this number, to me, is a little arbitrary in the sense that I understand what we did. We said, hey, we're gonna fund operationally stuff that's in the budget. And we're gonna use this money and and everything. But if if we didn't have the Strategic Priorities Fund and we just had this positive budget variance, it would, we would just take it and assign it to the stuff in the budget anyway. I mean, so it would, it goes to the same place in my in my head, in a, in a way, in like, at least logically for me. So what I would propose we do, if if possible, is we actually sit down as a council and we actually talk about what we, what, like, the mission and purpose of this fund. And uh then we can look at the things against the strategic, like, our strategic plan and our other, like, you know, you could take that plus the Parks Master Plan, plus a couple of other of these big initiatives we have, and we could dole out all of the money if we wanted to. Um, and that would be fine with me, because then we wouldn't have to carry a balance. Um, or we dole out seventy percent percent of it or whatever. But we just haven't done that work. And as a council, it feels weird for us to not have done that work since I've been here. So maybe it was done before. But since we've had this strategic plan, I can tell you, we haven't done that work. And as I think about, like, stuff that's in the strategic plan that we continue to delay doing, like some of the sustainability work that we say we want to do, like, I'm frustrated that this money sits here and not do- doesn't do anything, right? I want solar panels on roofs, for God's sake, right? And if we can do that, we should do that. And we're not putting this money towards that, because we, as a council, haven't sat down and agreed that that's what we should do with it. So I don't know when we do that, but before we spend three point two million dollars in twenty twenty-five on these housing properties, I'd like us to have that conversation. Because I don't know right now what I'm judging that decision against, other than the word of staff that says this should, this could be a good idea. And I don't know what else we would compare it to. So that's my opinion. Thanks. Otherwise, I'm fine with the numbers.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember DeLisandro, appreciate those comments. I think one of the things it's always good to remind people about um when they hear us talking about positive budget variance and whatnot is, you know, we we do forecast for for having some revenue that comes into this fund. And the fact is that uh a lot of that is because we have built uh a requirement into our budgeting process. When I say we, I'm using sort of the royal we of the city founders through our our practices and and policies that um, you know, we have a two percent uh uh contingency requirement that's added in every year, right? And um that money doesn't get allocated unless there is some extreme circumstance, right? If we were to have huge straight-line windstorm come through, and and that's happened in the past. It's been probably fifteen years or so since the last time that happened. But it becomes a really expensive event, right? Um, typically, what's happening is at the end of the year, um, we're coming in both under the expenses that we have identified, and we tend to come in a little bit more than the revenues we've identified. And then you also have this two percent. So um, you know, we're the likelihood is there's always going to be something in here. And so I appreciate the idea that we should talk about, you know, is there a target amount that we want to maintain? Because part of the uh rest of the um, you know, when we kind of get in there and knead the dough at the end of the year, is we have um carryovers. So, you know, it's thing, it's expenditures that we have um committed to but haven't been paid. Uh, uh, those are called encumbrances. So, you know, it's not So, you know, it's not just the strategic priorities fund, but we have a lot of other balancing that gets done at the end of the year too. And so having that sort of guidance would probably be helpful for us. The other, the other thing I do want to say in terms of the model here is that the transfer in that's identified should probably be looked at as more of a placeholder, just because even if we do a reimbursement resolution, the budget's going to be tight for the community health and wellness center, and so I don't want to set an expectation that the whole amount may be reimbursed with those bond proceeds. But we're just showing what the potential is with the reimbursement resolution.
Councilmember Loman and then councilmember Carter. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I really appreciate this, this page 452, Mayor, that's got this definition of the strategic priorities fund and, and how it's used. I, I, this is one of the, I think, one of the best slides I, I've seen as a council member, just in terms of this definition here. Because I think this, you know, because many times we'll have these conversations about this particular fund, and I find myself saying, well, what's the definition of this thing? What, what are we using this thing? Because when I first came on council, oftentimes I saw this fund using, you know, just kind of more so from a, from a council perspective of priorities, and we kind of, I think, gave a little more direction in terms of what we want to see. I think of, you know, for example, when we expanded the housing program, you know, that, that neighborhood program we did there, I think at one point in time, we took some seed dollars out of that to do some of the, the park initiatives, we were upgrading some of the parks. So I just think of those different, you know, kind of those innovative or kind of seed money things that we did for some of these things here. And so as I look at this, as I reflect on that, I, I really like the idea that our, our council has been able to kind of do that. But what I've kind of seen happen over the years that I've been here is that, you know, now what we've done is we have kind of, we still have that going on, but then we also have, we've kind of given part of our, you know, part of our, our responsibilities over this Bloomington Tomorrow Together type piece. And it, it just occurs to me that, you know, you know, that we're kind of using this fund for kind of two purposes there, and then now we're also kind of mixing in some of the commissions, work plans, we're kind of putting those things in there, and those are sometimes are not necessarily in the general fund, you know, where some of those things may have been in the past, they're being done here. And so what I'm kind of wondering is, does it make some sense to, you know, kind of, you know, bifurcate this a little bit in terms of there's council stuff that's going on? Or maybe even, even more split it down, then you got, you know, some of these council initiatives that are going on, and then we also have some of these, you know, really budget concerns that we really have that we, we, you know, looking to try to use these, these dollars for. So, you know, I'm all for trying to, you know, reduce the levy and if we could take some of these extra funds and do that, but I know we've got a number of things that are coming up. So we've got the firefighters, you know, that they're gonna, from that salary perspective, when those 18 hit us twice, you know, we should have dollars put aside. I'm not sure if staff is thinking about that. So that's sort of, as I look at these, you know, you know, at this fund itself, I get concerned, I agree with my colleagues, you know, here that say, hey, we were not kind of being planful, but it'd be nice to know, you know, almost like, almost like a capital budget, what do we have left? And we've kind of done that a little bit here, that's remaining for the BTT. So we kind of have an understanding of what that looks like, what should we be setting aside for those initiatives that are coming up so they don't? You know, I, I heard councilmember DeLisandro really articulately, you know, talk about this, not be kind of in a sense surprised, oh, this is the year we've got to do this. And then some of those other, those other expenses that we know that we're trying to use to, to stabilize out the, the budget, you know, can we kind of get a jump start on that by kind of putting those dollars aside in this, in this fund? And then whatever we've got left there, maybe those, you know, some of these other things we've got going on here. But I think by having, was this one, two, three, four, five different kind of directions to kind of be going, it's kind of, because it's not real specific, it's so general, anything can be packed into this thing. And that's what has concerned me over my, my time of being here. And it's, you know, it's, I, I love the slide, but I think that this really does demonstrate that, you know, this is kind of where we pack everything. And if, I think if, I think if staff needs a fund for that, maybe we should carve out something to do that specifically. But I, I think we've got to get this reined in and figure out kind of how we want to kind of move forward, rather than being reactive, be a little more proactive with this, with this fund in terms of what we're doing. So I, I love it. I think we're, you know, each year this gets better and better. And I'm just so excited that we're, we're kind of having this conversation.
Thank you, councilmember, councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I tend to agree with most of what's been said. And city manager and I did have a conversation a couple of weeks ago where you mentioned maybe pulling the councils together for a strategic planning retreat, and that's what this makes me think of. Because we did, well, I think before the, I think maybe my first year on council, maybe we had one, I don't remember if we've had one that was similar to that. But it is helpful to really get more specific, right? And get more agreement in terms of what, what are the council's strategic priorities? And I liked what councilmember Loman said about maybe like, if we need to have a separate fund for kind of ad hoc things that pop up from a staff perspective, maybe that's something different. But I like the idea of getting clarity, and it feels like maybe like a retreat would be a good opportunity for that. And then I also, you know, when I see the ongoing costs into 2027 for like forestry and the traffic injury reduction program, I mean, to me, I'm just like, why don't we just add those into the budget, right? And why do they need to be in strategic priorities, which I know is councilmember Nelson's thing that he brings up every time too. And I, and I do agree, I kind of feel like if it has ongoing tails, like for multiple years, we should just put it in the budget. So, like, it's a, it's, it is a priority, so, and it's not a one-time or a two-year priority, it's an ongoing priority, so. And that, the tree situation's not going to get better anytime soon. So I think that's all I've got.
And councilmember Rivas in just a second, but to your point also, I've always thought that about, we have the, the line item for communications in the general fund. Like, it was parsed out specifically for the additional publications that go out. We'll just roll it into the communications budget, and it just makes more sense, I think. Councilmember Rivas.
I'm the new guy, so I can ask the tough questions, right? How much does the city have as an emergency fund? How many millions of dollars? Let's say an earthquake hits us, which, you know, it's almost impossible. Possible, it did happen though, it happened. 1976, there was an earthquake here in Minnesota. But anyway, that aside, how much do we have as an emergency fund?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Rivas, putting an exact number on that is difficult. I think Kari could probably relatively quickly combine the various funds that we have, right? So, and, and give you a dollar figure. Our policy on our general fund reserves is that we're going to strive to have somewhere in the 40% range of our annual operating budget, okay? So I don't know if you remember off the top of your head how much that is, Kari, you can do some quick math, but that does two things. It provides for a reserve for unanticipated expenditures, and it also manages cash flow in the general fund because the vast majority of our revenues come, are remitted twice a year from Hennepin County in the form of property tax revenue, right? And so there's that period for those, you know, the five and a half months between those remittance that we're drawing down, and then it gets built back, you know, our, our operating fund is getting drawn down. But we maintain, as, as you're aware, reserves in many of our funds. And so if you want to say, what's the total amount that we have available, if there is an emergency, depending on the type of emergency, it's much more than what the general fund reserve is. One of the exercises that we've done in the past is go through and identify all the different funds and basically put a street light on them, right? The red, yellow, and green in terms of what do you have total discretion to move around those funds? What's, you know, do you have some caution? And red really limits your discretion because of, of how the funds are defined. So that's a long way of saying it's a hard answer to give you, but I think the simplest answer is just for the general fund, which we're mostly talking about when talking about levies and taxes, is a 40% of operating.
And I will, I will just add, that's around $40 million. The general fund's around $100 million.
Thank you.
So, so council, I think this is a conversation that needs to continue. I like councilmember Carter's idea of maybe it's time to back into a.
And Mayor and councilmembers, I have, you know, as I've been doing my one-on-one touch base with everybody recently, is suggesting that I think January is probably a good time to do that. Let's get us through the next couple of months here, and not just for the purposes of strategic priorities fund, but just because the council hasn't had an opportunity to do that over the last couple of years. We also need to do a check-in with our BTT core planning team, just to give them an update on where we are, and so trying to time those two together might be helpful as well. So I'll, I'll get to work on finding a time early in 2025 that works for them.
Sounds good. And the last word I'll have on the strategic priorities fund? We always talk about this as the council strategic priorities fund, but Jamie and I have had the discussion in the past, actually, I've had the discussion. What if, what if it's the community's strategic priorities fund? What if we, what if we put a million dollars out there and said, give us your best ideas how to spend this money? Something to think about. So, thank you, Kari. I'm going to get us out of here on time, so we're going to, we're going to say thank you, and we're going to move on in our agenda. Item 5.3, our city council policy and issue update. I will recap very quickly our listening session earlier this evening. We had five speakers today. Sally Ness had questions as to why her name appeared on police call records five or four or five or six years ago, and so we'll be looking into that and getting an answer to her, which will be the answer that we're able to provide. Michael Healy spoke regarding the bike paths, the proposed bike paths in the Nine Mile Creek Corridor. He is opposed to those bike paths. Michael is eight years old, and I thought he did a pretty good job in presenting to us this, this evening. Robert Coleman had questions about the Luther Kia application, and we've been other questions about, as we did tonight, about the, some of the other issues that we've been talking about in terms of redevelopment, especially in the Penn and American District. And then Sheri B brought forward some neighbor issues that she's been having some significant neighbor issues, and I want to give kudos to councilmember Nelson, who summed it up very nicely. You know, with all of the power that the city has, we don't have all, any power basically over neighbors who are being jerks. There's just not a whole lot we can do other than try and resolve it the best we can, but there's, our hands are tied in a lot of jerky neighbor situations, and it's, it's disappointing that some neighbors actually act like that. So, but we had a, we had a good conversation once again today, and I had a lot of folks there. So, Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add on the policy and issue update?
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor.
Council, anything else to bring forward this evening? Seeing none, council entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thanks very much for the conversation tonight. Well done, council. No staff left in, in the room, but the staff did a great job this morning, this evening as well, and thanks to the, the members of the public who participated. Have a good Tuesday, everybody. Enjoy October.